Hello? Just testing. Sound check, alright, good. Alright, welcome back. It is Tuesday, May 18th at 1:46 and we are reconvening the Monterey County Board of Supervisors. Could we get a roll call, please?
Good afternoon. Let the record reflect all supervisors are present with supervisors Alejo and Lopez appearing via video conference and supervisors Ruth Askew, Adams and Phillips appearing in person.
Thank you. For anyone who's watching us on YouTube Live or Facebook Live, you are also welcome to join us on Zoom at webinar ID number 224-397-747. I'd like to introduce and welcome Jocelyn Martinez, who is our Spanish interpretation services here in Chambers today. Could you please make our announcement?
Buenas tardes, Jocelyn Martinez interprete español. Se les anuncia que hay interpretación disponible en vivo vía Zoom. Al fondo de su pantalla, selección al icono del mundo y selección al lenguaje español. En estos momentos este servicio no está disponible para aquellos que llaman a la junta. Gracias.
Thank you. So, our first 1:30 scheduled PM item is an update and briefing on COVID-19. I believe I see Nick Chilos on the call here and we have 30 minutes total scheduled for this item, so we'll try to be done by 2:15 today and I'll pass the microphone over to you, Nick.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board members, and I believe we can get this done in less time than that. Madam Chair, we only have one item this afternoon and it's a public health update from Dr. Moreno, so I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Moreno at this point. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Nick. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can.
Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Alright. So, good afternoon, Chair and Board members. Ed Moreno, Monterey County Health Officer and Director of Public Health. This is my COVID update today. We continue to follow metrics here locally. Our case rate continues to be stable. It's 2.1 hundred thousand and our test positivity rates are still low. They're at 1%, meaning for every 100 people that actually get a test, only one person is testing positive at this time. Our hospitals are doing well in terms of the number of patients that are hospitalized. We have not seen any increase in hospitalization due to COVID and our testing turnaround time on average is still less than a day. And then the vaccination coverage, which I'll cover briefly in a minute, is approximately 61% of individuals 12 and older. We're still following the California Blueprint for Safer Economy and today the state released the most recent metrics as calculated by the state. So, they're also following metrics on Monterey County. So, our adjusted case rate is 2.1 and that falls into the orange tier criteria while our positivity rates are still fairly low. Both of those positive rates fall under the yellow tier. So, the state will keep Monterey County in the yellow tier for this week. As far as testing, I just want to let people know that they can go to our county website. The address and link is here to get information, not only on where you can go to get tested and where you can schedule an appointment to get tested, but also testing data as well from Monterey County. And likewise, our website also has information on vaccines where you can go to get vaccinated and vaccination progress here in Monterey County. As far as progress, overall, we do continue to provide this information on a regional basis for individuals, but this information and more detailed information is on our website. But the one thing that people may notice is that are the percentage of individuals that in Monterey County that receive at least one dose has dropped from 63% to 61%. And that's because we are now including in our denominator, which is the number we divide by to determine the rates, individuals 12 and up. So, we previously including individuals 16 and up. Now, we've added individuals ages at the ages of 12, 13, 14 and 15. So, it's going to increase the number of people that are eligible. And so, there's a slight decrease in the proportion only because we're now including 12-year-olds who are eligible to receive the vaccine in Monterey County. And one thing I do want to remind people is that most of you is about the use of face coverings. And most people have probably heard about the statement from California Department of Public Health and the Secretary of Health for the State of California. According to the state, on June 15th, Californians, California plans to implement CDC's face mask guidelines to allow fully vaccinated Californians to go without a mask in most indoor settings. So, that's the state's plan on June 15th. But until then, the state is still encouraging counties Californians and people who live here, work here, visit here to continue to use the state guidance for use of face coverings. And Monterey County will continue to follow California's requirements for face coverings. There's additional information on the website. The one that most likely would apply to this direction that was just announced by the state this week is the state's CDPH website, California Department of Public Health website and their guidance documents for face coverings. And the link is here. And if people have read this and they still have questions about face coverings, they're very welcome to call us on our COVID-19 call center phone number, which is 831-869-8700. And that is my update. Thank you, Nick.
Thank you, Dr. Moreno.
Great, thank you, Nick. Anything else?
That is it for the staff, Madam Chair.
Okay, fabulous. Colleagues, any questions or comments about our COVID-19 update today? Seeing that, I'll take it out to public comment. Any public comment on our COVID-19 update today? If one in the audience, welcome. Thank you for coming to our meeting today. We do have a very packed agenda this afternoon, so we're going to stick with our minute 30 for comments today. And make sure you push the button to turn on the microphone. Thank you.
Forced cooperation is the subject. The blood of murdered unborn children cries to God from abortion tainted vaccines. God will punish us if we use cell lines originating from murdered babies to manufacture and test vaccines. Not only does the use of aborted fetal vaccines constitute participation in grave sin, but their use is pseudoscientific and irrational and they are demonstrably biologically dangerously harmful to those who receive them. The saints instruct us by their lives and their teachings that it is better to die than commit one mortal sin. Saint Thomas informs us that there are five notes in the definition of a law. A law is an ordinance of reason for the common good made by him who has care of the community and promulgated. A law, therefore, that is disordered, irrational, harmful or unauthorized is not a real law and is not binding. The common good of the community is governed by and involves the cardinal virtue of justice. Justice is rendering what is due to another. Abortion is fundamentally unjust. Abortion is the intentional killing of innocent unborn children who are guilty of nothing more than being unwanted. To kill the innocent is manifestly unjust. In fact, it is murder. It is a crime. Forced cooperation with abortion, with the murder of unborn children and the exploitation of their remains through any forced use of pseudo-vaccines which utilize cell lines originating from aborted babies is grossly unjust and grossly contrary to the common good.
Thank you for your comments. I'm sorry to cut you off.
Not only do these vaccines involve the genocide. It's not three minutes, ma'am. I know.
We're doing a minute 30 today. We've got a lot of things on our agenda. So, we need that announcement this morning.
Okay, I have a lot to say too. Not only do these vaccines involve the genocide of the unborn.
Sorry, but I need to move on to our next public comment. We have a Zoom comment. Nick, you may, we'll give you permission to unmute your microphones. This is for Nick on Zoom and we have a minute 30 on the clock. Give us just a moment, Nick, while we get your microphone permission to unmute. And Nick, you'll need to manually, thank you. Okay, we've got, thank you, we've got you now, Nick. Thank you.
Hello, I'm a Monterey County resident and I'm just curious at the businesses within Monterey County that are allowing for residents to use their public facilities without considering that they're breaking the law such as the California GINA Act, which, you know, it prohibits any employments or businesses for disclosing any medical information such as genetic information. HIPAA also declares that genetic information is also called health information, so health history. So, how is the county overlooking the fact that businesses within Monterey County are actually breaking the law and especially people that are employed that cannot enjoy the same facilities as such as California Civil Unrual Act where everyone is accommodated the same openings in order to enjoy the same facilities as people? I don't understand how anyone is overlooking this within Monterey County. And it's actually very scary because these businesses are forcing people to take vaccines that are not, they're not FDA-approved. They're technically called gene therapy drugs and they're forcing people for a donut such as Krispy Kreme or having, they're getting other amenities.
Nick, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we are out of time for this public comment. If you had additional thoughts for you or any of our previous speakers, you're welcome to email those to us at cob@co.monterey.ca.us. Thank you for joining us today. Is there any other public comment on our COVID update? Seeing no more hand raised, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the board. Was there any additional direction to be given today for this item? Seeing then, we'll accept the report and move on to our next item, which is item number 12. Receive a presentation on the Community Action Plan for calendar years 2022 to 2023 from the Monterey County Community Action Partnership. We have a presentation from Lauren Suansupa, our Community Affiliation Manager, and Denise Fien, our Management Analyst. And Lauren is with us in person today. Hi, Lauren, thank you for joining us. And I'll just, for the record, we've got 30 minutes total scheduled for this, so we'll try to wrap it up about 2:30. Okay, perfect, thank you.
Much, Chair Askew and members of the board. Very happy to be here in representation of the Monterey County Community Action Partnership. A little closer. Thank you. Haven't been in person in a little while. We're here today to present the plan for 2022, 2023, as well as continue to collect public comments on our draft plan. I'm joined today by my colleagues Denise Fien and Glorietta Rowland, who'll be presenting with me, though virtually. Next slide, please. The Monterey County Community Action Partnership is an organization that operates under the Department of Social Services in our community. It is supported through a 15-member commission, of which members are appointed by your board. The mission is to assess the needs of the low-income people in our county to develop, maintain and evaluate community services that empower low-income individuals and families to improve their quality of life. We develop a community action plan every two years to help identify and prioritize our needs and services. Today, we are here to support commenting of that plan. We have worked already on identifying our causes and conditions, which I'll briefly cover. We have collected data through our sources, including the census as well as American Community Surveys, as well as one that we put out ourselves locally. Organized our draft, collecting our comments today as well as in other means throughout the rest of this month and we'll be ready to approve and submit, finalizing our plan, submitting that to the state to secure funding for our local services. Next slide, please. Starting out briefly in defining poverty. For the purposes of our plan, we utilize the federal poverty level. This is at the FPL, otherwise known as the Poverty Line, an annual measurement set by the Department of Health and Human Services that is primarily used to determine whether an individual or family qualifies for certain federal benefits and programs. The 2021 rate for a family of four is $26,500. In Monterey County, our poverty rate is just over 13%. This is slightly higher than the state and the federal average of poverty. Even more concerning, the real cost of living, particularly in California, particularly in our area, is that even at twice the federal poverty line, families and individuals continue to struggle and don't earn enough for basic needs. In Monterey County, residents living at 200% double the federal poverty level are at 35% higher than, again, the state and federal averages. This is concerning, it leaves a gap as many of those services are set at 100% federal poverty level, leaving those at 200% still struggling. Next slide, please. Some of the causes and conditions of poverty. These are factors that will, that set barriers to self-sufficiency and may make it more difficult for people to become self-sufficient. In our area, we have a very high cost of living, a shortage of affordable housing. We have an economy that's based on low wage and low skilled jobs. We were heavily impacted by October 19th as well as a lower education. as well as a lower educational attainment rate. Some of those conditions of poverty, they're environmental and economic factors. We have a limited access to healthcare based on access to healthcare facilities in our region, and insufficient access to safety net service providers, as well as, again, high impact by COVID-19 due to those factors. I'm going to turn it over to one of my colleagues, Glorietta Rowland, to discuss a little bit about their poverty profile.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Board members. When our Monterey County poverty profile, the Monterey County Community Action Commission did examine our poverty statistics as it relates to the region's economic and demographic characteristics. And we work to definitely understand how poverty directly impacts our community. We inquire about the needs of our low-income residents through our annual surveys, our written testimonies, and public hearings that allow us to develop a more comprehensive profile of poverty in our community. Next slide, please. For our profile, it continues, Monterey County's overall poverty rate does not affect many residents and households equally. Persons of color, sixteen percent of African Americans, sixteen point five percent of Hispanics, children with, who are under age four, twenty percent in our community are impacted by poverty. Twenty-four percent of our Hispanic children under age four, and thirty-seven percent of our African-American population under age four are impacted by poverty in Monterey County. With women and families, fourteen point eight percent of our families are in poverty, and forty-seven percent of poverty households have a female-headed household. As you can also see, a family of four in Monterey County, given these profiles, they would need an income almost three times above the poverty threshold in order to simply make ends meet. Next slide, please. The experience of poverty in Monterey County, seventy-two percent of all our public school children are eligible for the free or reduced lunch program. Nineteen percent of all children under age eighteen experience food insecurity at some time during the year, and people living in poverty disproportionately experience job loss, exposure, and economic impacts due to COVID-19. It's been a very difficult process in time during this crisis for low-income. Unemployment spiked from four point four percent to fourteen point four percent between June 2019 and June 2020. I will now turn it over to my colleague Denise Vian. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Up until this point, the planning process we discussed involves gathering poverty statistics that are specific to Monterey County. And this includes looking at the distribution of poverty, both demographically and geographically, as well as the experience of poverty for residents. The next stage of the planning process, we go about trying to identify the service needs of residents. We do that by conducting a community needs assessment survey. It's important to note that the funding for this, for, the funding for this program is a community service block grant funding, which is very flexible and covers a range of local services. Those services are categorized by six broad service areas, including employment, housing, income and asset building, education and cognitive development, health and social behavioral development, and civic engagement and community involvement. So we go about identifying residents' needs by conducting a community needs assessment survey. Importantly, this is a community-wide effort involving our service providers, the Department of Social Services, the district offices, and also our commissioners. So even though COVID goes without saying prevented extra challenges this year in conducting our biennial needs assessment survey, we still were able to get four hundred total respondents across the county. And mostly, that was a pretty even distribution, except we had more difficulty collecting responses from North County this year. But typically, community action agencies would ask residents what their top one or two service priorities are. We recognize as an agency that self-sufficiency depends on often multiple mutually supporting services and programs. So this year, we asked our residents to tell us, our low-income residents, to tell us what their top needs were by sector. So what we found out this year, some of the top needs and service priorities of our residents were vocational training, job readiness training, rental and security deposit assistance, financial management, benefit coordination, before and after-school activities, education support, mental health services, food boxes and groceries, citizenship classes, and leadership training. It's important to note that we go about this planning process for a reason. So once we gather all this information, the poverty profile, and the needs of our community, we bring the presentation to the public. And we've posted this community action plan since March, and we'll be collecting public input through the end of May. The plan is used to guide community services. We will first integrate public comments. We'll submit this plan to the state. And then we'll use this plan as a guide to solicit services based on the poverty profile of Monterey County and some of the public input residents have provided about their service priorities. Lastly, the plan will be used to contract community services for the next two years of funding. On that note, I'd really like to acknowledge our current service providers. Right now, we're in the second year of a two-year funding cycle. And the service providers in our network provide a wide range of services for our residents all across the county. And what's special about this piece of funding is they're not individual services, but these providers act together with us as part of a broader network. And I'm going to turn the presentation back over to Lauren, and so she can explain to you how the public can submit comments to be part of our plan.
Thank you so much, Denise and Glorietta. We're happy to continue to collect public comment here today, if anyone would like to share. But we also understand that not everybody feels comfortable. And speaking in a forum like this, we do offer some other methods and continue to collect through the end of this month, as mentioned. When providing comment, we're really interested in gathering some information about who you are, where you're from, whether or not you consider yourself to be low-income, as well as any of your comments regarding your family or individual needs, our assessment process, and our plan, including any additional services that we may or may not have missed. Next slide, please. In addition to any comments collected today, we also continue to accept comments by visiting our website at mcdss.co.monterey.ca.us/cap, also by email, or by visiting any one of our 2021 current CAP providers, which were seen on that previous list. We really thank you so much for all of the comments and welcome your input. We really can't do this without the collaboration of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise, Glorietta, Lauren. I will just begin, thank you for the presentation, for doing this work. It was the Community Action Partnership that introduced me to the county originally. And so I really appreciate the way that that funding and the way that the commission brings people in to understand and learn more about services that are available in the community. Yeah, I will see if my colleagues have any thoughts or comments they want to jump in. Otherwise, we do have some public comments that I can go out to. I don't see any hand raised, so we'll go to public comment right now. We have a few public comments. We're going to stick with our minute thirty for public comment this afternoon. We'll start with Jada. Jada, we'll give you permission to unmute your microphone. And thank you for joining us and for sharing your thoughts with us today.
Hi, hello. Happy Tuesday, everyone. My name is Ashley. My daughter is actually Jada. We are from Solidad here in Monterey County. She has gotten support from the Partnership for Children. She has been diagnosed with cancer and is currently in remission. But they have helped me with rental assistance during this last year. With the pandemic, I had suffered a job loss due to my kids being home full-time. They have helped me with the rental assistance, which has been just such a blessing for me, being on a fixed income currently, has made it so I haven't fallen behind on my bills or my rent. These programs, I feel, are so desperately needed in Monterey County to help families with sick children, financial hardships, gas and food assistance they've helped me with, which is extremely a need, because we travel three hours to Palo Alto and back for doctor's appointments to Stanford. So I'm very thankful and appreciative for all the support, Partnership for Children, and all Monterey County organizations that help all these families in need. So thank you all.
Thank you for joining us and for your comments today. Next up, we have Ann Packer. Ann, we'll give you permission to unmute your microphone and share your thoughts with us.
Hi, I'm here today representing Gathering for Women. Gathering for Women, as I hope you know, is a nonprofit 501(c)(3) committed to the health and well-being of homeless and housing insecure women on the peninsula. We provide comprehensive services to promote our guests' health and safety, and to support their path out of homelessness and into a sustainable and healthy way of life. We do this through our Monterey Day Center, which offers hot nutritious onsite and weekend takeaway meals, needed clothing, showers, comprehensive case management support, limited emergency assistance, job interview skills, access to free basic mental and physical health care, and referrals for other necessary services through our community service providers. Our greatest need in the community is affordable housing. Transitioning our homeless guests into permanent affordable housing has been an increasing challenge. With the federal poverty income guidelines being too low, several in the community cannot receive assistance from programs that assist with housing. The cost of living in Monterey County is so high, our clients rely on programs to help them with move-in and rental assistance. But when they don't qualify because of the federal poverty income limits, they remain homeless. And I do have a testimonial from one of our guests' initials, AC, which I'm going to read in the first person. Affordable permanent housing was unimaginable for me. A seventy-four-year-old, single, disabled female who had lost hope of ever obtaining housing after being homeless for eight years. I lived under a bridge for about six years, then entered into transitional housing. The last months in transitional housing were hard. I'd lost all hope of getting housed and was dreading the thought of returning to the streets. I was on every housing waitlist possible. Thankfully, with the collaboration between agencies and endless hours of case management, an apartment accepted the Housing Choice voucher. And I finally became housed in October of 2020. All I could think was, I'm off the hamster wheel. So I thank you very much for your time and your support and efforts in building a stronger, more just community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments today. Next up, we have Tatiana Ayala. Thank you for joining us. We'll give you permission to join the conversation.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon. My name is Tatiana. I am a Program Service Coordinator at Partnership for Children. Here at Partnership for Children, we service children with life-threatening illnesses, and we provide practical support to their families. I assist with the intakes of all of the rent assistance requests we receive here at Partnership for Children. I have firsthand seen the demand and the urgency in which our families need our help paying for rent. In the first three months of this year alone, forty-five of our families requested rent assistance. And fortunately, we were able to provide that help to our families. A large portion of our families are farmworking families, whose income was disrupted by the impact of COVID. And in addition to COVID, their employment was also affected when farmworking season ends, leaving a lot of families in need of rent assistance. We have found that rent assistance helps alleviate some stress of financial burden, but most importantly, it allows our families to focus on their children's health, their children's treatment, and their overall well-being. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us and for sharing your thoughts. Next up, we have The Village Project. We'll give The Village Project the ability to unmute and share some thoughts with us today.
Hi, thank you. My name is Stacy. I am the Executive Assistant with The Village Project. We are pleased to support the underserved community members throughout Monterey County as a CAP Carers Partner this year. For thirteen years, we have been providing culturally congruent approaches to the ways we serve our community members. We are pleased to provide input related to the needs of community members. COVID-19 pandemic has showed us the great disparities that continue to exist for the community members we serve. While we do not have clients who are able to be present to speak directly to you today, I do have a couple of points that were highlighted by many of our clients. As stated before by other community members, homeownership programs, rental assistance, and affordable housing are extremely important and services that they deem necessary in the community. We are also seeing an increase in those individuals who need food support, as well as fuel support, as the gas prices continue to increase. Through our enrichment programs, we have seen that many of the parents would like more educational supports and enrichment supports in the community available for their children. Thank you.
Thank you so much for joining us and sharing these comments today. Next up, we have, I believe it was Daniel G. with YWCA.
Yes. Good afternoon. My name is Daniel Gonzalez. I'm the Program Director at the YWCA Monterey County. We're a local nonprofit that works primarily with victims of domestic violence and human trafficking. We provide wraparound holistic services. We provide legal assistance, sheltering, therapeutic services, and we also have educational and outreach services that work throughout the county. And, you know, similar to what's been stated by my counterparts from all the other partners in the community, we find that from the surveys that we've been providing to our clients and the people that we serve, housing is one of the biggest issues in our community, in our county. Access to affordable housing, we have a transitional housing program where we try to assist clients with finding a home after they leave our shelter, and we're finding it really hard to find access to affordable housing for them. You know, on the other, to kind of summarize a little bit of what we've been hearing from our clients is access to utilities. Internet access has been an issue during the pandemic. Transportation with the high cost of fuel right now, people are having a hard time in transportation. Also, we received a couple of comments that indicated that the requirements to qualify for rental assistance in some programs is a bit...
Daniel, I'm sorry to cut you off, but we are out of time for this comment. I do encourage you to submit written correspondence to the board, as well as through the Community Action Partnership link, to make sure that we have the full information documented. And our email here, for anyone else who had comments or wanted to elaborate, is COE.
Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you. COB@co.monterey.ca.us. And I think we can throw the other slide maybe back up that shows how to contact the Community Action Partnership. With that, I don't see any other public, any public comment in the audience? Yes, yes, please. Thank you for joining us. And please approach, come, yep, come right up to the microphone and make sure it's turned on and just make sure we can hear you loud and clear.
Okay. Red. There we go. Okay, this will be done with maybe greased lips. I am here as a consumer through not only Cecil, Whole Person Care, McCombs, Gathering for Women, Interim, Project Room Key, Project Home Key through the governor, Homeless Coalition, HSTAP, and other agencies. What we're asking for are more comprehensive resource guides, for one, for networking among all of these disparate agencies in the community and funneling people appropriately to the channels they need to get to. I founded a gauntlet myself. I went through I Help for Women, Gathering for Women. I actually worked for Banquets and got unemployment, so I am very blessed before COVID. COVID was actually a blessing for some people. I have gotten a lot of people into the Marina Country Inn, into Project Step Up Program where I am currently. However, I have a Housing Choice voucher, and because of poor credit and former incarceration, difficult for people to, we need some amendments with Realtors or some kind of forgiveness or small loan program so people can get into housing in the first place. And I think that should be it. And I can leave my name and, you know, all these different agencies hopefully will be reporting. I found out through Gathering for Women yesterday, and that's why I'm here today.
All right, thank you so much for joining us. Is there any other public comment in the audience with us today? I'm not seeing any, so I will, and we do have one final public comment on Zoom. Melissa Kendrick, thank you for joining us. We'll give you permission to unmute and share some thoughts. And Melissa, you'll need to manually push the unmute on your side of the computer so that we can hear you.
Unmute. Can you hear me?
We can. Thank you. Perfect.
Thank you so much for having me. First of all, I would like to thank both the supervisors and particularly the CAP staff, Loretta, Lauren, and Denise for their phenomenal support during this year. All funds from CAP are used exclusively to purchase food. Demand for food in Monterey County has quadrupled this year, and we are consistently serving over fifty-five thousand families each month and distributing more than thirty million pounds of food through our direct distribution sites. We've never handed out so much food so fast. Demand for food remains at this extraordinary high level. As we look ahead, high demand for food is likely to continue for the next eighteen months or beyond. Many of our nonprofit partners either have not reopened or are just operating under very difficult circumstances, increasing the need for our direct services. For over fourteen months, we've remained open, depending on our dedicated staff and the amazing National Guard members working incredibly long hours on the front lines of this public health and hunger emergency. We have not missed a day at the warehouse or in the field since shelter in place began. We are so grateful for all of our partners, pantries and soup kitchens. Many of them were on the call today. They have just been unbelievable. We've completely reimagined our entire operations to scale up and serve the incredible need in this county at a breakneck pace. While we remain hopeful that the effective COVID-19 vaccination efforts will allow our local economy to recover over the next...
Melissa, I'm so sorry to interrupt, but we're out of time for public comment on this item. We're doing a minute thirty for public comments today. So I do encourage you to please send the full comment to us so that we can make sure that it gets included in the CAP record, as well as the County Board of Supervisors receive it. And just personally, I want to say thank you for all the work that you've done with Food Bank, serving hunger needs in Monterey County. Okay, don't see any other comments for public comment right now, so we'll close public comment. I'll bring it back to the board for any comments or questions.
I just, Madam Chair, yeah, I'd like to thank you for the presentation and very thorough report that was filed, so thank you. Educational.
I as well. I'm just so very pleased. Thank you, Lauren, for coming forward. And I also want to thank the speakers who commented on their personal experience and the experience from Gathering for Women as well. It takes a lot of courage, a lot of strength, to come forward and speak as eloquently as you did, and I just want to reach out and thank you personally. As well, I look, one of the topics that was mentioned is that we could really improve on our access to mental health services. That's been mentioned a couple of times, but I think seeing that there's roughly one mental health provider for every three hundred ten people is just really astonishing low, astonishingly low, and I'm hoping that we're going to be able to address this now that we have the awareness of what the numbers are at this point to be able to move forward with increasing that mental health service. And I simply look forward to working with you, Lauren, and the DSS and all of the people who have come forward so that we can improve on all of the work that we're doing. But great kudos to you for the incredible, just the headway that we've made this past year or two. It's really been wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I see Supervisor Lopez.
I just want to thank staff for bringing this forward and see if maybe there's a link or something that can be shared so that we can make sure to get it out to more people via social media. I know that the impact of this year has really made people take account of all the resources that we put into the community through these different programs and partnerships. And I thank all of our partners for the year of success that we've been able to have such, in such a rough circumstance with COVID. And I know that the needs are unique this year. And as we come out of this, there are additional needs like behavioral health, which was touched on, but really, I want to make sure that we do everything we can to get you additional public input in terms of the community's perspective on the resources that they feel are needed. And so any additional information that could be sent to our offices to make sure that we share and get that out would be greatly appreciated. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And Supervisor Lejo.
I just wanted to thank all our staff and all these community partners that have really made it a mission to really uplift the well-being as much as possible for those who are struggling the most in our county, not only in the last year, but for many years. So I appreciate that work, and it's just a reminder that when we talk about economic recovery, it's just not the economy, it's just not small businesses. More importantly, it's our families, helping them to get back on their feet and be able to get back to where things were. But I know that those poorest residents in our community have been the hardest hit, and it's still going to take some time for them to be able to get through this. So I appreciate the programs, and I commend my colleagues for repeatedly standing up and putting resources out there to really help address the issues of poverty and a lack of resources in our county. And I commend the work of the Community Action Boards and partners. Thank you.
Thank you. We've closed public comments, so I'll just mention that. I see another hand just was raised online. The, just a couple of comments that I have, you know, my understanding of the, one of the items that jumped out at me when I was reading the report is that says, "Many low-income residents are working poor who struggle to earn enough income to maintain a stable level of self-sufficiency," on page fifteen. And the thing that strikes me is that, if I recall, the Community Action Partnership is really sort of the war on poverty. It was originated from the place of how do we address the systems of poverty and help people move beyond those systems that hold people in poverty? And so I would really encourage us, as we think about how to invest these funds, to consider, you know, how do we help, how do we, how do we make sure that we're investing in ways that are bringing people up out of having to, you know, work full-time and yet still exist in a place of where they can't take care of their family, pay their bills, afford their rent, where their children are living in hunger insecurity? And I think that that's a real challenge, and how do we get to those underlying issues and underlying sources? The other thing that I would just encourage the commission to consider as you develop out the plan is sort of the way that these services are coordinated. There's a lot of, a lot of different county programs and pockets of money that are available. And so making sure that for the service providers that we're giving them sort of the best opportunity to work with the contracts that they have to deliver services, rather than having, you know, forty-seven different contracts that we, you know, you've got to manage because you've got four different contracts for the same thing through different agencies. So just encouraging us to think about how do we coordinate so that we're making it easiest for our service providers and maximizing the federal dollars that are flowing in through through Community Action. With that, I think we will close. I think we're not, there's no direction needed, so we will receive the report today. Thank you so much. And we will look to move forward to our next item, number thirteen.
Chair, I thought there was some action requested on this item.
Okay, my bad on that. So we do, I guess, need to approve and authorize the transcript of all public comment be inserted into the CAP document and to prove and authorize the Director of Social Services to sign the completed plan document for calendar year. I'd be happy to entertain a motion.
Still moved.
All right, we have a motion from Phillips, the second from Adams, and we will take a roll call vote.
Supervisor Lejo?
Aye.
Supervisor Phillips?
Aye.
Supervisor Lopez?
Aye.
Supervisor Adams?
Aye.
And Chair Supervisor Root, ask you.
Thank you, and thank you to County Council of Los Angeles for making sure we got the action you needed. All right, and with that, we will close item twelve with the motion passing, carrying, and we'll move on to item number thirteen, which is a public hearing to consider adoption of two ordinances amending titles twenty and twenty-one of Monterey County codes. We have Craig Spencer with us to give a brief presentation. And again, just watching our time so we can get through all of our items this afternoon. We have one hour total dedicated for this item today to include public comment, discussion, and presentation, so we'll try to stay on track to be wrapped up on this about three thirty. Craig Spencer, thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Craig Spencer with Housing and Community Development. I am here today to present the Outdoor Cannabis Cultivation and Renewable Energy Requirement Revisions, the two ordinances amending both inland and coastal zoning codes, and I hope this does not take an hour to get through. Today, just a little background on this item. The Board approved this five-year pilot program for outdoor cannabis cultivation, which applied in three different areas of the county back in 2019. The program was applicable to the Kishawa, Big Sur, and Carmel Valley areas, and only in certain zoning districts. And there were some regulations that required permitting for cultivation outdoors. In January of 2020, the Board of Supervisors and the Cannabis Committee asked for some updates and directed staff to meet with some stakeholders from the outdoor cultivation industry. The cannabis program, Joanne Iomoto and her group, did meet with the industry in Carmel Valley in early 2020, and the results of that were presented to the Board and the Cannabis Committee, basically identifying why there was not participation occurring within the program. To date, we have nobody permitted within that outdoor pilot program. And the stakeholder meeting identified the industry who might participate, identified some barriers to entry in that program. So the Board and the Cannabis Committee directed us to prepare an ordinance that revised some of the outdoor pilot program to make it easier to participate in that program and to increase the participation in that program. We did get some initial feedback from the Cannabis Committee on the policy direction and had incorporated that into a draft report separately. At the Board of Supervisors, we, the Housing and Community Development, was asked to create an ordinance amending the energy requirements for indoor cultivation. So I'll go through mostly the outdoor cultivation and jump back to the indoor energy requirements just for a moment before I conclude this presentation. So within the current outdoor pilot program regulations, again, it's applicable in three areas of the county. The, an applicant would need to show two forms of evidence that they participated in the medicinal cannabis industry before 2016. So that would be some aerial evidence and/or documentary evidence that they participated in a medicinal program, and then they would qualify for this outdoor pilot program. There were some minimum setbacks required from roads, from the nearest off-site structure, from streams and watercourses, as well as youth-oriented facilities. Anyone permitted under the program would be allowed to grow up to ten thousand square feet of canopy. And the pilot program was adopted for a five-year term, and it was intended to be studied and reported back on at the end of that five years. Feedback from the stakeholders were that some of those provisions were not allowing folks to participate in the program. There were some comments about opening up the areas, particularly grazing zoning districts in Kishawa and the central Salinas Valley area. The setbacks were one of the main hurdles to participation in the program, especially in the Big Sur area, the setbacks from the nearest off-site structure. There was some folks who could not provide proof of prior cultivation. There was some request to have a larger garden size, more than that ten thousand-foot canopy, so that it becomes a more viable business operation and entity when you scale up a little bit. And the unknown about the future of the regulations, given that was a five-year pilot program, had folks hesitant to participate in the program and invest in the permitting and the startup of their business, not knowing where the program was headed in five years. There were a number of other general feedback items, not specifically about this ordinance, but some things that the industry wanted to see. They were supportive of expanding the pilot program to all areas of the unincorporated county. They wanted to see what's called the Triple R program that comes from Humboldt. That would be the Retirement Relocation and Remediation Program, where someone had previously cultivated, they could retire their cultivation site and move it to an area that could comply with permitting. There was some concern over enforcement and desire to see some different committee established, other than the Cannabis Committee, for outdoor growers versus the industry that occurs in greenhouses and indoors. So staff took that feedback, presented it to the Cannabis Committee and to some stakeholders, and prepared draft ordinances that are in front of you. Those draft ordinances for the inland areas would expand the outdoor cannabis cultivation pilot program to include the permanent grazing zoning districts within the Kishawa area plan. That was not part of the previous ordinance. It was limited to resource conservation and rural-density residential zoning in that area. In both inland and coastal, so both ordinances would do these things, extend the five-year pilot program from five to eight years, reduce the setback required from the nearest off-site structure from five hundred feet to two hundred and fifty feet, include a provision within the ordinance that allows exceptions to the setbacks based on site factors, and increase the allowable size of gardens from ten thousand square feet to twenty thousand square feet for permitting. We did not include some of the other things that were requested in the ordinance, like light deprivation, hoop houses, some of the other things I've mentioned that are on your screen here. And the ordinance does not expand beyond that grazing land zoning district in Kishawa. It does not expand the areas where this program would apply. I'm going to jump back to the energy requirements briefly. Within the inland and coastal regulations, a different chapter of our code. The outdoor pilot program exists in chapters twenty and twenty-one point six nine. This is getting back into where we're permitting greenhouses and indoor cultivation. So indoor cultivation is currently required to provide renewable energy generation onsite that offsets fifty percent of their projected energy demand. The proposed ordinance would amend that to increase some flexibility in how to accomplish a similar goal. It would allow still for onsite renewable energy generation. One could make up any deficit that, and it ends up occurring with purchase of offsets, and/or they could participate in a hundred percent renewable energy generation program provided by our local CCA or PG&E. program provided by our local CCA or PG&E. Uh, so jumping back over to the outdoor, uh, section, we did bring the ordinances to the Agricultural Advisory Committee and the Planning Commission for recommendations. The Agricultural Advisory Committee considered, uh, a previous draft of the ordinance that would have expanded the outdoor pilot program to the Central Salinas Valley area. Um, the Agricultural Advisory Committee was not supportive of that, primarily because of, uh, some unknown conflicts between certain crop types. Uh, that would include the traditional row crops with use of pesticides and the very low, um, thresholds for pesticide existing within a cannabis crop that needs to be tested before it can go to market, as well as the unknown setbacks between a cannabis operation and a vineyard where, where cannabis ha- in other jurisdictions has, uh, created some conflict with the, the grape products. So, uh, because Central Salinas Valley is such an intensive, um, agricultural area, the Ag Advisory Committee and our Ag Commissioner did not recommend including the Central Salinas Valley area plan at this time. They also did not recommend reducing the setback from the nearest off-site structure in favor of keeping the ability to amend that setback and the setback exceptions. That recommendation went to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission recommended approval of the ordinance without the Central Salinas Valley area plan at this time, but with the setback from the nearest off-site structure reduced to two-hundred-and-fifty feet. They also recommended that the board direct staff to annually review the program, including a review of whether or not it should be expanded to any other areas of the county until one-hundred permits are approved under that program. Um, I won't go through this again in, um, in the, in the sake of timing, so I'll jump right to the staff recommendation, which is to find this ordinance categorically exempt, and I'll note that that, or statutorily exempt, that that statutory exemption expires in July of this year, um, for cannabis ordinances that require subsequent discretionary review of permits that are themselves subject to CEQA, and adopt the two ordinances, the inland and coastal ordinances, the coastal ordinance being subject to certification by the California Coastal Commission. That concludes my presentation, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, colleagues. Thoughts, comments? Uh, maybe we'll go to the Cannabis Committee first. Supervisor Lopez?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I want to say thank you to staff for getting this done so quickly. I know, you know, some of these deadlines that we're up against, specifically the one at the top of the staff recommendation slide of July first, is real. Uh, and so some of these modifications happening ahead of that really makes these adjustments necessary, given some of the changes that are happening in the state legislature to propose, uh, legislation with things being added and removed. Uh, I really look forward to hearing the public input, as I'm assuming there'll be quite a bit, given, uh, the nature of some of these changes, but, uh, in terms of the work being done and getting us here today, I really want to thank staff for, for putting these on a quick timeline to get it before us. Uh, in terms of some of the recommendations, I just, you know, I know that time is going to be limited for public comment, but, uh, ask that folks really focus their comments for us and let us know, you know, what they're feeling in terms of the different recommendations as it came out of Plan and Commission and Ag Advisory Analysis for us, uh, but I will hold the rest of my comments until after listening to the public input. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Lopez?
Alejo, you mean?
I'm, thank you, thank you Supervisor Alejo. My goodness, thank you Supervisor Lopez, Supervisor Alejo, we'd love to hear your thoughts.
No, no, thank, thank you for, uh, Madam Chair, yeah, the urgency is, is real. Senator Caballero had a bill on provisional licenses that included an extension of that CEQA timeline, and that was taken out of the bill, so there was obviously pushback in Sacramento to give any more ti- uh, time extensions for the CEQA issues on cannabis, so here we are and having to make a decision before the, the deadline. Um, but I, I want to, I thank our staff too, because I think, um, um, with this pilot, outdoor pilot program, we've been trying to move cautiously, learning from other cannabis cultivating counties and learning, uh, from some of the pitfalls, um, some of the political landmines that were stepped on in other counties, and we're trying to make adjustments that are, I think, are reasonable. Um, we understand it's not everything everyone asks for, but I think they're the reasonable steps that could, uh, um, better allow an outdoor, um, pilot program to, uh, better work in, in, in our county, not only in terms of some size and, and, um, and also perhaps some other areas to consider. Um, but, but I also just wanted to stress though, um, you know, the, the, not, not everything was included, because obviously some of the, the nuisance issues that become, um, big legal battles where the, whether there are the, uh, light deprivation, which really means, um, sometimes these hoop houses that in other counties created, um, a lot, resulted in a lot of angry residents, um, um, not liking the look of, of plastic covering, um, acres of hillsides in their area. Um, um, also the proximity to some of the residents has been an issue, but I think we're trying to, um, make adjustments there. And, and, and so, and so, um, I think, um, I think proceeding cautiously is, is important, um, but also making, um, reasonable adjustments is fair, and so I think that's what we accomplished here, and I think it's worth giving this a try and re-looking at it in a year, see how it works, and, and I, then being able to, um, perhaps make additional adjustments. We know this is new for our county, and we're going to have to continue to, uh, um, evolve and make adjustments, uh, to hopefully have a strong, uh, s- uh, small, um, outdoor, um, program within our county, and I think from the beginning, I, I think, um, stakeholders saw the benefit of having that as part of our cannabis portfolio in Monterey County, and I think we try to convey, uh, support, but also trying to reach a balance with, um, neighborhood needs and even the issues raised by agriculture. Um, in Santa Barbara too, had, had lawsuits between cannabis and, and grape vineyards that were right next to each other, and so those, those are real issues for us to consider, and I think, uh, we've, uh, tried to reach a right balance, uh, with, with the changes proposed here. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Alejo, and for your patience with my tongue-tiedness earlier. Um, I think, did Supervisor Phillips, did you want to? Okay, let's go out to public comment. Um, I know we have a, a people with us today, I see on our attendee list. If you could raise your hand, um, if you're calling in on the phone and would like to participate in public comment, you'll need to raise your hand by pressing star nine so that we can call on you. So anyone on the phone, you'll need to press star nine in order to raise your hand. Um, we are sticking with our minute thirty for public comments today, um, and we'll start with Robert Roach. Robert, thank you for joining us. We'll give you permission to unmute, and, and then you'll need to unmute yourself.
Great. Well, thank you. I believe these are going to be self-funded enterprises. I mean, I don't think any angel investors will be coming forward to fund a twenty-thousand-square-foot cultivation operation. So they're not going to have any business income until that first crop is harvested, processed, and sold, and under the conditions of this program, they, they'll be able to produce just one crop a year. I think the board should defer the taxes for the first year, and thereafter keep them very low, no more than one dollar square foot. You should also waive permitting fees for the first year. You should do everything you could to help these applicants succeed, including relocation under the right circumstances. I mean, they've waited a long time for this. If we had a social equity program, they should be in it. You have to ask yourself what messages will be received if these businesses fail in their attempt to enter the regulated market. In addition, I think that we need to keep an eye on SB fifty-nine, a part of that bill that did not get deleted about extending the provisional licenses, because I think it's possible that issuance of new provisional licenses could be limited to social equity applicants. I know that the county has a study going forward to identify who those people are, and I think that could be important information vis-à-vis the outdoor grow program. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Um, next up, we have Miles Lerner. Miles, we'll give you the opportunity to unmute your microphone and share your thoughts.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, indeed, we can. Thank you for joining us.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, really appreciate everyone coming here to try to make this happen. Um, I just want to, I guess, educate the board that, um, I'm an applicant in this scenario right now, and it seems very hard to be included. Um, my infrastructure since twenty-fifteen has been, uh, hoop houses, and I have that on my property, and now, um, you're saying that I'm not able to use them. That means I have to destroy my infrastructure, which doesn't sound that good. Um, it also, um, helps, um, when you do different strains, like some of us grow sativas, which end in the fall, and the longer you have to wait, you're dealing with weather. So, uh, please help us be successful and not take away tools from us. I don't see you guys, like, telling the raspberry farmers they're not allowed to have their hoop houses. Um, and also, let us use some depth tarps like some of the other counties, like this is a twenty-thousand-square-foot thing, it's small. You guys hold the right to revoke any of these permits once you issue, issue one. So please just give us the tools we need to be successful, and, um, that would be great. Um, also, the, the fees are super high when none of us have been working for, since twenty-sixteen, since you guys shut us down, so please, uh, give us the opportunity to be successful in our county. Thank you so much, appreciate your time.
Thank you for joining us today, Miles. Um, next up, we have Oliver Bates. Oliver, we'll give you permission to unmute yourself and share your thoughts. Now just remind everyone, we have a minute thirty on the clock, um, so if you guys would, if you could help me by watching the clocks, I don't like interrupting people. Um, and then following Oliver, we'll have Danny D. next. So Oliver, thank you for joining us, um, and please share your thoughts.
Um, hello, board, can you hear me?
We can, yes, thank you.
Uh, thank you for your time. Um, Oliver Bates, the Big Sur Farmers Association, and, um, we just wanted to, um, express our full support, um, and our great gratitude, um, towards the board and its members and the Cannabis Standing Committee, and, um, especially staff, um, Craig Spencer, and with special thanks to Joanne Iwamoto, um, great forces that have been able to really capture this thing, and they've really done a great job. And, um, we would like to express our support for the Planning Commission's recommendations, uh, kind of as they read. Um, and, uh, this was beautifully done, very thoughtful, a lot of passion, a lot of people, and it very much reflects the views of the Big Sur Land Use Advisory Committee. And, um, and we thank you Supervisor Adams, um, for your support always, and we, we know this is a hard time for, uh, for all of us. Um, only caveat we'd like to add is, uh, the notion of a triple R program around, uh, well, mainly one-hundred percent of our membership being affected by floods, fires, and then literally, uh, uh, you know, tens of millions of dollars of, of losses in revenue in the last four years, which used to go directly into our communities. Um, but we would like to express a lot of gratitude and thanks for all this effort that's being noticed, um, and, and we can't thank you enough for anything you can do for us. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us today, Oliver, thank you for your thoughts. Um, next up, we have Danny D., followed by Joey Espinoza. If we could give both, um, the opportunity to unmute so we're ready to go with our next comment. Thank you Danny D. for joining us.
Hello?
Yep, we've got you.
All right, yeah, I just want to thank all the, uh, Board of Supervisors, especially Craig Spencer, you know, for helping this whole program move forward. Uh, as said by the first, uh, person in the public comment, I really think these fees need to have some sort of, you know, waiver for the first year or some way to amortize them over a few years, because I'm one of the very few applicants, and just with the start of the application, you know, it's already, the fees are already starting to add up, and you know, I haven't, as Miles said, I've been working for almost four years now, and so we're still, you know, we're running other sorts of jobs, just trying to stay afloat, you know, with, and like, uh, Miles stated before, um, the hoop houses, I have a property that has had two hoop houses on it, that one has been since two thousand and one, and these are huge tools for us, you know, for our cultivation. And just to start the permit process, I'm going to have to pay to get these taken down or pay for some sort of, uh, permit to remove them, even though they are technically temporary structures, um, you know, and part of them, we would like to use them for light deprivation, which is kind of the future of cultivation. And if this program's ever going to be successful, it can't rely solely on outdoor cultivation. The only way it's going to be successful is if people are able to do light deprivation, because as this becomes online and becomes a nationwide thing, uh, outdoor cultivation is simply going to be a thing of the past, and you know, light deprivation would be the only way that, uh, we can succeed, so, you know, just want to add a huge emphasis on that.
Thank you for your comments today, Danny. Next up, we have Joey Espinoza.
Hi, thank you. I, I wanted to speak to the renewable energy change in the code, um, and, and maybe get some clarity, and I apologize, apologize if Craig covered this, I was, um, pulled away when he was presenting, but, uh, the code that's been struck, uh, is the one that says you need to have, uh, onsite renewable energy potential equal to or greater than one-half of the anticipated energy demand. So it looks like we're striking out the fifty percent, and we're putting in the ability to purchase renewable energy at a rate of one-hundred percent, um, and then we're also saying you can still do onsite renewable energy generation, um, to the extent feasible and purchase of carbon offsets for any portion of power not provided. I'm curious, in, in that section, are we saying, you know, to the extent feasible and then purchasing enough carbon offsets to equal a hundred percent renewable energy, or are we still thinking a fifty percent? Uh, I wasn't quite clear when reading that, so, again, sorry if you covered that in this presentation, but that was my, my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Joey, and we'll hold that question for when we, um, finish public comment. Um, next up, we have Harmony. Harmony, we've given permission for you to unmute, you'll need to unmute on your side, though, of the computer.
Hello, thank you. My name is Harmony. Um, I would like to echo the comments of Bob Roach and Miles and Oliver, um, all great comments. Also, uh, support the recommended, recommended changes, uh, by the Planning Commission, including removing, uh, or reducing setbacks. Um, I do understand that there's a terror issue possibly around vineyards, and maybe there is something to address that, um, while still allowing us to reduce setbacks. I, um, one of the main key issues is definitely cost of entry, and I think really needs to be addressed, uh, myself and many others, just the application fee alone. Um, it's the same as greenhouses, even though we are a much different scale, and when you don't trigger any of the waste management or air quality or health department, they're all exemptions, um, you know, it'd be nice if that reflected in our fee schedules. So fee relief, tax waivers, uh, vouchers for any upgrades would be much appreciated through the equity program moving forward, and, um, also maybe making a ministerial permit available for the cottage scale that, um, is there. Thank you.
Thank you Harmony for joining us today and for sharing your feedback. Um, next up, we have a phone number ending in the number three-four-one. In order to unmute, you'll need to press star six. This is for the phone number ending in three-four-one, and you'll need to press star six.
Um, hello, my name is Freya Peters. Can you hear me?
We can, thank you for joining us.
Um, thank you so much to everyone, the supervisors, the planning commission, the Big Sur Farmers Association, Oliver Bates. Um, I want to commend Miles and Bob Roach for coming forward, um, regarding the light deprivation. I think this is a really crucial point that needs to be reconsidered on the legislation side. As a cannabis attorney, this is something that I see commonly a problem, because people come in and they want to run the numbers with me, they want to look at what does it take to go legal? That's the purpose of this pilot program, bringing people from the illegal to the legal and giving them an opportunity. If you're telling them, hey, if you go legal, you get one-third of your year to propagate a crop, you have to cut out the entire rest of the year because you're not allowed to have any supplementation or any deprivation, and guess what? You have to pay taxes with that one-third that you're using, no one wants to do it. No one, the numbers don't add up. You are, you are alienating people who want to be in a legal market because the cost is too prohibitive. So I want to agree with Harmony as well, you know, the control of the entrance is too high, particularly the taxes the first year. I think, um, waiving the, or not, excuse me, reducing the setbacks to two-hundred-and-fifty square feet is a great start, but also we should allow a waiver of setbacks, because there are areas of Big Sur, areas of Kishawa, where there are people that have come to me as groups saying, hey, we could never meet this setback, but we all don't care, everybody on this ridge wants to grow. Well, why not let them waive it? Why can't you have a waiver from your neighbor instead of have to have the two-hundred-and-fifty square, square feet? I don't I don't see why that couldn't be waived. Um, same with expanding zoning zoning and the no prior grows. That's been a big problem for people, trying to show where there was a grove previously. People are not comfortable also showing the
Sorry to interrupt, but we are out of time for this comment. Uh, my apologies.
Thank you so much. Have a great day.
Okay, thank you. Um, next up, we have a Bee Farachi Faraski. We'll need to give you permission to unmute and then we have a minute thirty on the clock for uh public comment today.
All right, can you guys hear me?
We can. Thank you for joining us.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I'd like to express um much gratitude and support for the the people that spoke before me. Really great points. Also, that the ag and planning commissions and Craig Spencer. Um, my issue was more with the with the zoning and and I'm glad that everyone kind of supported a a common sense approach to that. I I wish we could see John Cummings included. However, uh, maybe hopefully in the future for him. Um, I think it's very valid what everyone's saying about the the greenhouse is the only thing I would add or hoop houses that I would add to that is the fact that that we're kind of limited, as the ag commission pointed out, in our toolbox to dealing with pests um and those drift issues for people that are more over in the Salinas Valley. Um, I think having that barrier um is could be a really useful tool since we we are not allowed um many of the the tools that everyone else has in their toolbox for dealing with these pests and also keeping off spray drift um and things that might affect our legal testing from neighbors and and avoiding those issues that they're having in in other places. I mean, I I assume that's the only way that they're getting by in Salinas with all those crops is having that barrier to stop, you know, kind of cross contamination. Um, but I just wanted to add that and thank you guys for your time. Thank everyone for all the effort that's gone into this. That's it.
Thank you. I don't see uh any other comments on Zoom. Uh, we do have uh someone here in the, um, so anyone else on Zoom who would like to comment? If you could go ahead and raise your hand so I know what we've got in front of us, that would be helpful. Um, we'll welcome our um in-person comment. So if you just make sure you hold the mic close enough and make sure it's turned on. You may take your mic. Yes, you're good.
Take it off, that's okay?
You're good.
Um, as uh Chair asked, you want to apologize in advance? I thought I had three minutes. I prepared a two minute forty-five second statement. I'm gonna do the best I can.
Thank you.
You have a copy of this in front of you, okay?
Yeah.
My name is John Cummings. I'm a fourth generation Monterey County resident. I have a pending administrative permit PLN one nine zero two four three for the outdoor ca- cannabis cultivation pilot program in the central Salinas Valley area. And I'm asking again to be allowed to participate in the outdoor pilot program and to contribute to its to its success. In April, I participated in both the Monterey County Ag Advisory Committee meeting and the Monterey County Planning Commission meetings. Being a rancher and a member of the ag community, I understand the concerns that were discussed. I would also like to offer a few solutions that I believe will address these concerns while still allowing productive, a productive and informed of pilot program that includes the central Salinas Valley area. First, increase the buffer area in the central Salinas Valley area to two miles. This would be sufficient to address any concerns about drift. Second, allow the central Salinas Valley area and central Salinas Valley area permanent grazing zoning as originally proposed in the pilot program, but add the option to reassess annually, at which time permits could be revoked if any substantive issues arise. This will allow farms to continue to operate and participate in the pilot program, address the concerns of the ag committee and meet the requirement for CEQA outlined in AB ninety-seven if passed before the upcoming July deadline. And I'm out of time. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for submitting your comments and writing, too. That that always helps. We appreciate it. All right, we have a couple more hands raised online, so we'll go back to Zoom. We'll start with Chris Bun. Um, and if we could give everyone permission to speak, that way we can roll through our final public comments here. Chris Bun, we've got a minute thirty on the clock for you. Thank you for joining us today.
Thank you. I could just add a few more details to the issue of drift that Mr. Spencer raised. There's been extensive discussions about this single issue in the ag community. Of course, at the ag advisory committee, as as was noted, but also at Farm Bureau, Board of Directors and in general. And the problem is, um, you know, if you're growing a crop of romaine, broccoli, whatever, and you apply pesticides or fertilizer fertilizers and and some of that product drifts onto your cannabis neighbor and causes his product to test positive and he can't sell, then you suddenly, as a romaine grower, are liable for that crop. And that's going to bankrupt somebody. The costs involved with that are are prohibitive. So if you open this door to allowing open grows in the Salinas Valley, um, that's a Pandora's box that'll have horrible, horrible consequences. Um, even with the two mile buffer. I mean, if you live in this valley, you know what the winds are like. So I urge you to keep the Salinas Valley out of this open grow program. Thank you very much.
To Doug DeGeorge. Doug, thank you for joining us.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can, thank you. We've got a minute thirty on the clock.
Perfect. So um, I think I'll, well, also, first off, I'd like to say thank you guys for taking all our concerns into consideration and really listening to us. Um, but a couple of my concerns, I think everyone has previously stated fairly clearly that I I do believe that the greenhouses are very important, especially as a tool really for pest mitigation and the potential for being able to maximize the use of the ten thousand square feet that we're given. And then uh another concern as an applicant is that uh we applied, I believe it was either early March or late February, and we have just finally heard back about, you know, just the the beginning of the process. So uh with the rate of speed at which it's going, I wonder if there's any way we could expedite it? If we can come to an agreement on all this? Because the work that it takes to get everything going can't be done overnight. And with the way that things are currently looking, um, I don't know if, even if everything does pan out that we'll be able to even grow anything in the next season. I'm worried that the pro uh that the uh permits are going to end up dragging it through maybe into twenty twenty-two or at the speed they're going, who knows, maybe twenty-three. And then the potential for revenue can go to who knows where. I'm wondering if there can be a way to expedite the permits and speed it up as well as the prohibitory cost of the permits. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us and for sharing your comments with us today. We'll go back to Ram Stoney.
Hello, uh, thank you for
We've got you now. Okay, very good. Thanks for joining us.
All right, that, all right, well, thank you. I really just want to, of course, thank the supervisors and staff uh for all the hard work they've done. Uh, but I would like to point things back a little bit to the triple R program, which really should be just one R and that's relocation. Uh, to use ourselves as an example, uh, we did have a grow in Kishawa uh under Prop two fifteen prior to twenty sixteen. And uh, we can prove that we were there, you know, legally uh through photographic evidence and and paperwork. Uh, but that property is no longer available to us. Uh, we have identified other properties that we could move to. Uh, but under the current ordinance, as I understand it, we would not be allowed to move to that property unless it also had a previous grow on it. So so we really, we'd just like you to consider the relocation process and allowing us to be able to go to another site that meets all the other criteria other than just not having to grow on it before. Uh, so that's all I have. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us and for sharing um your questions and thoughts with us. We have another phone uh call uh ending in three, seven, six. We should be able to unmute and share your thoughts. We have a minute thirty on the clock for the phone number ending in three, seven, six.
Uh, hi, can you hear me?
We can. Thank you for joining us.
Uh, yeah, thank you. Uh, thank you for being here and thanks for all the work that we've kind of all put into this. Uh, my name's Jack Willis. I'm a member of the Big Sur Farmers Association. Uh, I own property in Big Sur and I'd like to participate in this program. Um, uh, the problem is, is that, uh, well, I'd like to echo what I've heard so far from uh Mr. Roach, Oliver Bates, uh, Miles Lerner, and also, you know, the people that would have liked to participate that were enforced upon in the last year and are now suffering uh through these extensive fees and uh they're they've also been um handed felonies for things as simple as having a washing sink for their hands and and they've found really no proof of any wrongdoing or that they've harmed anyone. Um, but it's this kind of thing that creates the mistrust in the community that that's been really hard to get over. Uh, and the simple things that people have been asking for would be a great start. So if we could, we could start with those things that are very practical and we could um just uh go by what the land use plan says. And uh, the the ask that we have asked are two point five percent of uh the property are left, which is low density. And uh, we've asked for a twenty-five hundred square foot, five thousand square foot, having some exemptions, having some waivers because obviously the cost of this has been so prohibitive and the mistrust from the community has been so great that it's hard to get anyone to sign up. Uh, and if we want to of uh treat this like we treat any other crop, we wouldn't be having this conversation still five years later. And uh, let me just read from the land use plan real quick. Says right here, two point one philosophy and goals. Quality should have precedence over quantity of any permitted uses, whether residential, recreational or commercial. Any new development should remain within small scale, traditional and rural values of the area rather than to introduce new or conflicting uses. Uh, and then let me read this because this is us. This is who we are. This is, this says it perfectly. The special cultural characteristics
I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm so sorry to interrupt, Jack, um, but we're we're, we've run out of time um for this comment. I, we're holding everyone to a minute thirty today, so my my deep apologies. Uh, but please do s- submit your um any additional thoughts uh to the board at cob@co.monterey.ca.us.
I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you for your patience um this afternoon, uh, getting everyone uh through public comment. I don't see any additional hands raised on Zoom. So with that, I, okay, we've got one hand raised. Emilio Eisner, we've given you permission to unmute. If there's anyone else who would like to uh join us uh for public comment today, please raise your hand. Otherwise, this will be our final public comment. All right, Emilio, thank you for joining us. We've got a minute thirty on the clock for you.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
We can, yes, thank you.
Awesome. Um, so yeah, I'm just coming in as a, you know, I'm an industry stakeholder, but I'm not actually an applicant for this. But um, you know, grew up in the area and I've seen a lot of the cultivators in the area. And speaking to, you know, the issue of greenhouses on these ten thousand square foot allocations, you know, looking at it from an industry perspective, from a water use perspective and from a pesticide and pest mitigation perspective, um, it really just is the most logical way to cultivate, especially at a small scale. Um, we've seen all kinds of residual pesticide and overspray issues in the industry and the greenhouse itself really mitigates that. And it also mitigates the impact of, you know, crop predatory pests on the cannabis cultivar. Um, so just looking at it and and again, looking at it through my lens, I would just like to throw in my two cents and say that um the greenhouses themselves are a really effective tool in order to not waste water, in order to manage, you know, runoff and over to manage your fertilizers, to manage pests, to manage all the different things that go on in a cannabis cultivation operation. And also, just as, you know, many of these other folks have said, to kind of maximize the benefit of that cannabis cultivation operation for the grower um and letting them get two to three turns in a year, which is really the only effective way to be profitable at such a small scale. Um, because a lot of these folks don't have the ability to do two hundred thousand or three hundred thousand square feet where one crop is is a highly effective moneymaker for them. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. And thank everyone for um for joining us today to share your thoughts. Um, okay, so with this, I will close public comment. We'll bring it back to the board for um discussion. Supervisor Phillips?
Yeah, I'm I I I'm not in favor of of outdoor grows and I haven't been for some time. I was initially on the uh cultivation committee and um and the advice that we got from the experts was don't go into outdoor grows until, for security reasons and um the drift reasons and and aroma. Uh, there were a lot of reasons. Um, until we really got a han- handle on on indoor grows. And as we saw, we have twelve permits and we still have a hundred um in the queue. But uh, having, and I got to say, it's a pilot project. When you, when you start moving it from five years to eight years, it doesn't look much like a pilot project. But having said that, if if that's the recommendation of of the uh Cannabis Committee, I'm not gonna oppose it. Uh, but I I feel strongly that we shouldn't extend it into the Salinas Valley uh in 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 North County and that was our um uh one of the things that we agreed upon when we started this pilot project. Um, I am concerned uh not so much in the Big Sur area, in the remote locations, uh, but I am concerned in the Kishawa area uh with the neighbors. And if the neighbors then wants to grow grapes near where the cannabis is, uh, we're gonna have a problem just like we saw with cannabis and hemp when you have uh crops that were um not um consistent with each other or compatible, I should say. Um, I I'm uh obviously, I'm I'm concerned about the se- security of the fields. We know the the greenhouse uh ones are are protected by fencing and uh uh and and patrols. Um, and I I gotta say, uh, the ones that were arguing against any tax, I mean, this is going to be uh costly to enforce. I've been to some of those locations back in the day in the Big Sur area and their remote locations. So code and code compliance and enforcement is is gonna be costly uh uh and and a bit cumbersome for the county. But having said all that, um, if this is the direction that that the Cannabis Committee is is recommending going forward and staff is recommending for it, uh, I'll I'll support it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, and I'll go back, I think, out to our Cannabis uh Committee again. Supervisor Alejore Lopez, did you want to make any final comments or?
Madam Chair, I'm wondering if we can get a response from staff on some of the questions that were raised specifically around, you know, the light requirement and if if staff could, for my, for my purposes, give us a little more background on the central Salinas Valley and why why that wasn't recommended from both the Ag Advisory Committee and the Planning Commission.
Craig, are you still? There we go. Okay, thank you. Any other questions Supervisor Lopez that you wanted to address for the Central Valley, the light issue?
Yeah, so, well, that's where I'll start. And then I I've got one follow-up depending on the answer on the central Salinas Valley.
Great, thank you. Craig?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, Craig Spencer again. Um, I just, I heard a a lot of uh nice words from the supervisors and public and I want to make sure that Kelly Donlin from County Council is included in the staff recommendation. She really puts in a lot of work on all of this, um, and I'm, as I'm sure the board knows. Um, so she's kind of behind the scenes while I'm up here. But um, to answer your question, Supervisor Lopez, we did not include out uh light deprivation techniques like hoop houses, uh primarily because the outdoor cannabis pilot program is defined um by state license types and by our our definitions within the pilot program to be an outdoor cannabis cultivation program. When you allow light deprivation or artificial lighting or any portion of the grows for the uh for for cannabis, it becomes a mixed light cultivation, which the board can do. Um, and any changes we might make today, we'd we'd ask to come back with those changes so that um County Council and myself and others can can uh figure out how to make these things work within an ordinance. Um, with regard to the central Salinas Valley area, uh, I think what you've heard today and and I'm, I think Henry um is on from the agricultural uh Commissioner, Henry Gonzalez is on. He can probably speak to it better than I can. can probably speak to it better than I can. Uh, but it, it, there were a number of concerns raised by the Farm Bureau, by, um, uh, representatives of the Salinas Valley, I can't remember, some water coalition. Um, and, uh, the concerns were, uh, basically with the, the crop impacts on each other, goes both ways. Cannabis on grapes, um, row crops on cannabis, pesticides, that kind of thing. And, uh, some of the unknowns about where these, how many we're talking about and where they would be located, uh, since we, again, never registered anyone within those zones. Uh, so I hope that answers those two questions, and I-
That did one more. Uh, Joey did raise a question about the classification or percentages in terms of the energy use for the other ordinance change. I'm just wondering if you could touch on that as well.
Right, yes. So the ordinance now does require 100% offset, which would be a change from requiring onsite renewable energy generation to offset 50% of the projected energy demand. The ordinance now requires 100% offset, and that can be accomplished in four different ways essentially. Um, providing the onsite renewable energy, purchasing credits, uh, or participating in those 100, 100% renewable programs from the utility electric providers.
Okay, thank you. So my, you know, my comments after listening to all the different ordinance that have been put through the paces with the different committees is I still, you know, I'm, I'm supportive of the recommendation that we've made here today. And the only concern that I have is the fact that, you know, Mr. Cummings has been at every single meeting from the beginning of this cannabis process, and I know where his site is, and I do believe that it's a great site for what we're talking about. And so I guess my question is a legal one, and it is to staff. I mean, I'm not, I'm not a fan, as I haven't been, of opening it up to the ent- entire Central Salinas Valley area, but I do believe that, you know, this particular site is a great one. And is there any other legal process under which Mr. Cummings' site could be considered?
I believe the answer to that is yes. There are multiple ways that that could be accomplished. Typically, we would not include a, a single site in an ordinance that applies countywide. Um, more, more likely, the, the, the better path there would be to do some kind of special treatment designation for the property, which would be a zoning amendment or general plan amendment for that property that goes with that permit. Uh, so there are some options to get him across the finish line, but there are more complex and environmental legislative changes. I think, uh, Kelly may have something to add.
No, I don't. I'm sorry. You covered it. I was just popping up, just in case.
Thank you. I'll wait to hear from the rest of my colleagues. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you, and thank you for the additional information. Um, Craig, Supervisor Alejo?
Yeah, I just wanna reiterate that I think on the other amendments, I think those that already went to our committee, so I'm good with those, um, and, and give those a try. And then we will, we will relook at how things work in the future. So this is ongoing, I think, for everybody. Um, we're, we're trying to get this program working right in Monterey County and for Monterey County. Um, but I do, I do wanna express the concern just about the depraved, that light deprivations for the reasons already stated. Um, but on the, the other portion that we haven't really, um, looked at was this, this, the last issue that Chris brought up. I mean, it was, it's his district. It's, um, um, I mean, we, we opened the door to exploring the possibility, uh, whereas when we first did this pilot program, when Supervisor Salinas was around, Supervisor Phillips and, and Salinas conveyed, you know, not wanting to participate in, in the pilot program from the beginning. Um, but rather than look at an entire, uh, large region, I'm just, Spencer, you said, there's many ways to doing this. Um, is there a, a more narrow map or region, a subset within the, that central Salinas Valley region that could be looked at, um, with, with perhaps not, with the, just a more limited number of, of, of perhaps permits that could participate in a more, in a smaller region, I should say? Is that possible? Are you, Kelly or Craig?
It, it is possible. Um, I mean, the board could, uh, could direct us to amend the ordinance as it's written, to incorporate something like that, but it would require us to go back and, and make some changes to that ordinance and come back to the board at some point in the future.
I think it could also create issues of confusion with the public if it's too narrow of an area within our ordinance. I, I think the better option in limited instances is what Craig brought up, is for that person to come forth with a, a, a potential project, and there could be a potential, uh, special treatment area, or what Craig was alluding to earlier.
Okay, uh, that's goo- good to know. Um, just considering what are, what are the best, best options available out there, and if that's, that's a better way to go, then, then I'm open to that as well. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, and I see Henry Gonzalez has joined us as well from the Ag Commissioner's Office. Um, Mr. Gonzalez, would you like to just, uh, speak to the question of, um, the, the special treatment designation or the Central Salinas, um, area involvement in this, um, ordinance?
Yes, us. Uh, good afternoon, Chair Askew, members of the board, uh, Mr. McKee, Mr. Girard, uh, Henry Gonzalez, uh, your Ag Commissioner, speaking as such, as speaking as, as staff here with regards to the issue of including the Central Salinas Valley and the issue that Mr. Chris Bun brought up about pesticide drift, uh, and, uh, you know, really, uh, feels very strongly about this because I'm very familiar with this issue because this is one of the issues that the Agricultural Commissioner's Office i- is mandated to, uh, to deal with. Uh, generally, we try to avoid a pesticide drift, but when it happens, we conduct investigations. And, uh, the investigations of drift are not just a drift on the people and cars and whatnot, but of pesticides on, onto neighboring crops. And there can be two instances, one where the resulting drift i- is in excess of a tolerance that's been established by the federal government. Uh, but in all, in other cases, it can be, uh, any amount, uh, can render a crop a total loss when that pesticide is not registered for use on that crop. So there is no tolerance for that particular pesticide. And we investigate these, uh, too frequently. Every year, we have a, a number of these cases that, that we investigate, and, uh, generally what happens is that, uh, we, uh, we put a stop sale on any, any, uh, of this product that's out there, uh, either at a, at a packing house or wherever it's at, markets, wherever it is at, and, and that, that crop is considered a, a total loss. Now, when, during our investigation, we're trying to find out, uh, how that overtolerance happened, and if we find, uh, enough evidence to demonstrate that there was a guilty party, uh, we will take actions against that person. And probably worse than the penalties that we might administer is that, that neighboring grower is going to be buying that crop of lettuce or celery or spinach or what it may be, um, and have to, uh, pay for that, uh, to the neighbor that they've contaminated. So, uh, because, because pesticide regulation, registration starts at the federal level, and because, uh, THC is a Schedule I drug, there are no pesticides that are registered for use on cannabis. There are perhaps a handful or so of pesticides where the label is vague enough that we can allow that pesticide to be used. But otherwise, there are no pesticides registered for use on cannabis. So any amount, parts per billion, parts per trillion, any amount that would get onto a cannabis crop would render that crop a loss. And this is what we're, what we're really talking about there. It happens with other crops. It's going to happen with, with cannabis, uh, because drift happens. When drift happens in, in minor amounts or onto a crop that has that same pesticide registered and it's below tolerant, then nothing will happen. But in this case, this is a very special case, it will render that crop a total loss. And if buying the neighbor's celery crop or spinach crop or lettuce crop is, is a, is a big impact on, on a company's budget, buying a cannabis crop, uh, can be, can ruin a, a company. Now, I previously said at the Planning Commission when pressed that, uh, a two-mile buffer would, would be what I would, uh, be able to, uh, to support. And I say a two-mile buffer because we already have a, a situation like this with another, with a particular pesticide. We've had this rule in place as a permit condition, uh, imposed by the Agricultural Commissioner's Office, and it's a product called 24D. And with 24D, you cannot use this product after blood break of, of grapes because this pesticide has been known to travel, uh, two miles, uh, and, and more. I know it was, it was suggested that two miles is not enough, uh, and it may not be in some instances, but it is something that I believe, uh, we can support.
Okay, th- thank you for the additional context and information. Um, so just, um, I would love to bring it back to, um, if Supervisor Adams had any thoughts. Um, I'll quickly put my, my, my comments into this. And it sounds like we have three supervisors who are okay with the recommendation, um, as it's presented by staff. Um, the, uh, I, I don't have any reason to, to question the process that it's been through. I did wanna notice that the, 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 sorry, the Planning Commission, um, you know, it wasn't just strong, it wasn't a, you know, there were five, I think there were only, it was, it wasn't a ma- majority of the commission that was there, uh, when the vote was, was taken, and there really were only five who, uh, voted in support of it. And I think the intent was really, from what I understand, was to, to keep, to move the project forward. But there is, there is fairly broad concern, from what I'm hearing, about, um, eliminating the ability for, um, uh, uh, across the board, limiting, limiting across the board the option for, um, something to happen in the Salinas Valley. Uh, and I would, I would add my, um, concerns to that and, uh, express my interest in finding a way to, um, to navigate something there forward. Um, I wouldn't want that to slow us down from being able to, uh, get the rest of the pilot program, uh, um, changes, uh, ordinance changes made so that, so that, so that others can, can proceed with their projects. Supervisor Adams, did you have any additional thoughts?
I do. Thank you very much, uh, Madam Chair. Um, and thanks to the staff, my God, I mean, the yeoman's work that you guys have done, to all the growers who have been so faithful in trying to come through with the things that we're working on, um, people who have been reevaluating this pilot program over the last several years, just to reach agreement on the amendments that are before us today. As you all know, the amendments that we're considering today are very important to the heritage growers in Big Sur and Kachawa, who had legal businesses in, prior to 2016, and have been detrimentally impacted for the last five years by the indoor grow-only requirements. Um, I, uh, I really appreciate that we were able to adopt a pilot program in 2019, but clearly the restrictions that were placed on it at that time have not worked for the industry. There's a real sense of urgency, however, for these heritage growers as we move, that we move forward today in order to stay within the secret deadline, um, that is coming up in the next month or so, and if at all possible, to be able to engage in this pilot program this growing season. I share Supervisor, uh, Askew's comment that this, I don't want anything to slow this down today, but there are some other things that I, I wanna talk about. And I also wanna remind people that we're really talking about a very small area of land that would be in the pilot. I mean, it's, it's under 100 acres total for the entire pilot. Um, with that, though, I want to, to, um, ask my colleagues to support me in adding to the staff recommendation that we also direct staff to develop an interim process similar to what has been done for the indoor grow regulations to allow folks to move forward in this season while they work through the permit process. As Joanne Iwamoto told us last week, there are currently more than 100 indoor growers that have been allowed to grow while their permits are being processed. That was allowed, um, in, for that industry to begin to operate and operate, um, uh, that allowed the, uh, industry to begin to operate and generate tax revenue as they worked through their permits. And I'm requesting now that we apply that same, um, logic and the same process for the outdoor grow permits. It would considerably hold up the ability to participate in the pilot program if we do not provide a similar path to compliance. And I'm just wondering if staff could please comment on what their thoughts are on adding that, um, as a recommendation. And I don't know if that would be Ms. Donlin or, or Craig Spencer.
Craig, we can't-
Thank you.
There you are. Okay, very good.
I'll take the first shot at it, and then, uh, Erica Lundquist or Kelly can, can add if I miss anything. But, uh, if the, if the board desires to, uh, extend the good standing, um, requirements for outdoor growers, which, which is the way that we administratively put parameters around who could continue to operate in the greenhouse setting while they pursue permits, we could go back and explore, um, uh, you know, how we would go about including the outdoor situations in those good standing memorandums we have, um, if that's the direction of the board.
If that were the direction today, would we be able to move this ordinance forward today?
Yes, you could move this ordinance forward. Um, the, the good standing memorandums were administratively written to clarify some situations that weren't codified in the ordinances, um, so they're not part of, uh, the county code that we're amending that was done administratively. It's interpretation and clarification.
Thank you.
So Supervisor Adams, is that a motion? Uh, I would like to add it to, I'd like
to move approval of the staff recommendation with the addition of an interim pla- path to compliance in order to allow the pilot project to proceed this growing season, um, uh, with the, um, with the path to compliance. Yes. I have a couple of other comments that I would like to make, but I would really like that, to make that as my motion after I finish my comments.
Okay.
Um, I wanna go back now to the, um, special treatment area, um, because I think that is a viable, a viable path. And I know that there is another person, another grower who has approached us, who is just outside of the Carmel Valley Master Plan, um, and in the greater Monterey Planning Area, south of the Carmel River. So my expectation is that I will be able to recommend to him also that he pursue, um, looking at a special treatment area, and that might be something that we could, um, uh, share, uh, information about. And then additionally, I would also like us to take a look at the relocation option. I'm not concluding that in this motion today at all, but I hope that that's something that we will look at as well, especially considering what has happened to some of the properties in the Kachawa and the Big Sur area due to the fires. But going back to the motion, it's, I would like to move to approve the staff recommendation with the addition of an interim path to compliance in order to allow the pilot projects to proceed this growing season.
Okay, so, um, just, and just to clarify, so we don't have that in front of us, but it would be directing staff to, to develop that and bring it back for approval?
Is that how we would have to do it?
Yes, that's how you would have to do it. So you're gonna be slowing it down.
Would we be able to have that next week? Craig?
Craig, are you with us, or Kelly? Kelly, are you with us?
I just don't wanna slow this down for a minute.
Yeah, I, I can speak to that. It, the ordinance before you would be adopted today in the inland zone. The coastal portion does need to go to the Coastal Commission for certification, but staff could come back with the parameters, the administrative criteria for good standing in the outdoor pilot program, um, participants. I also do wanna remind the board, you did give us direction on the outdoor tax rate, but that has not been added to the county code. So that ordinance will be before you very soon because we need to amend Chapter 7100 to add the outdoor tax rate. So that will be before you for two readings very soon.
Ms. Donlin, I think Supervisor Adams was asking how quickly staff could come back with the, um, streamlined process. Do any, Mr. Spencer, any idea, or Ms. Donlin?
Um, the, yeah, the timeline for coming back with administrative, um, decisions or, uh, direction- The, yeah, the timeline for coming back with administrative decisions or direction on the good standing criteria, that would be, I'd say we could have something in a month's timeframe approximately.
But we would-
Go ahead.
Go ahead, you go ahead.
I was just going to say, I'm going to second the motion, so that we have a second on the motion, so we can continue discussion on it.
Okay.
And then the question is the timeline.
Right, so, yes, so today we would be moving approval of the staff recommendation. Would we have to, would we include the interim path? Or would we have to wait until a month before we would add the interim path language in?
Yeah, so I think, I think the action is to adopt the ordinance today, if that's what the Board desires. And then any direction the Board wants to give to, for staff to do additional work and return with additional information would be direction to staff, sort of separate and apart from adoption of the ordinance. I mean, related, obviously, but not-
Got it.
But kind of two distinct actions.
Okay, thank you. Then I will hold my motion to move approval of the staff recommendation. Correct. The, the path to compliance, the information about special treatment area, and information about, oh, sorry, okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure I can, if Supervisor Adams is going to add the direction to the staff, I don't think I can support it, because I think, in all due respect, we're opening up a whole Pandora box that we've been trying to keep from getting there. So however it's phrased, I don't know whether I can support it. But I want to go back to the, to the indoor cannabis, because the question that was raised by Supervisor Lopez and Joey Espinoza, so right now, Craig, it's 50% renewable energy on-site. And we're moving, because I know that was a burden for some of these, some of these people that couldn't get there. And so we're going to, we can get off-site renewables, but it's, now we've gone up to 100%, so the 100% renewable has to be either onsite or-
Yeah, no, it's doing really well, actually.
Yeah, I think I heard-
Go ahead.
So, yes, the indoor, the requirement for indoor cultivation would be going from a requirement to have onsite renewable energy generation. So you, primarily solar panels on the roof, or on parking structures on the industrial zones, to offset 50% of the projected energy demand of the indoor cultivation on that site. That's being scrapped and replaced with language that increases that threshold. It's no longer 50% of the projected energy demand, it's 100%. But the way you get there is either providing onsite renewable energy generation, and/or purchasing renewable energy credits, or participating in the programs from the utility providers that could, that provide 100% renewable energy. So all the energy going in theoretically is clean or offset, and the threshold is 100% rather than 50, but it doesn't require that all 100% be onsite generated.
Why, why did we go to 100% versus, say, 75%?
Well- I think what we were looking at at the time was how other jurisdictions have approached the same issue. And with the participation in the 100% renewable energy programs from the utility providers, you end up with 100% there, but we could make the first criteria, if you're providing onsite renewable energy and/or purchasing credits, that could be set at something less than 100% if we, if we wanted to do that.
I'd be curious what Supervisor Lopez thinks.
Yeah, thank you Supervisor. So this was actually a concept that came out of a lot of conversations that I had with industry, and most of them were supportive of 100% because we have CCE, or the Triple CE, and that's a great local option. Their big concern was lack of roof space or ground space, so having to buy additional land in order to generate, and the capital and the cost that that would take versus, you know, paying a little more on the bill every month. And so that, that is the huge barrier that we're removing by putting this in place, making ourselves more competitive in terms of the marketplace for businesses to come here and set up.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we have one motion on the floor with a second to adopt a staff recommendation and add direction, so the staff recommendation to amend these two titles with Item A, B, C, as listed in staff report. We also have additionally, direction to staff to develop a good standing pathway to compliance for outdoor growers. Supervisor Alejo?
Yeah, Madam Chair, my last question, just for staff. I know they're pressed for a lot of things, and we've got a lot of things in the pipeline that have taken a long time. How much more would this add to administer this, the Good Faith Program in this instance?
If I may, Madam Chair, we do currently have an informal program through HCD for the indoor and the greenhouse operators. I would suggest we administratively modify that if it's at the Board's direction to include the outdoor pilot program. We wouldn't necessarily need to come back unless directed by the Board to do so.
Thank you, that makes me more comfortable with that option. So thank you for answering that, and that it can be, it's manageable. And I get the pressing need for a cultivator to be able to start moving forward if they're going to be able to cultivate anything this year. Thank you.
Yes, Supervisor Alejo, if I may also add, that there are some other items being considered by our Planning Commission at an upcoming meeting of May 26. Ultimately, if the Planning Commission makes a recommendation to the Board, we'll be bringing back those items for future Board consideration prior to the July expiration of the statutory exemption. So you will have some other items coming forward. We could also report back on the success of that good standing program.
Excellent, Lundquist, appreciate it. Welcome.
Great, and I think we have a couple on our attendees who we need to mute. So if everyone who's not presenting or speaking, if we could just make sure you're muted, that would be fabulous. Okay, and so the only other thing that I heard discussed by the Board that I don't have any specific direction on was in regards to the Salinas Valley area, whether we give direction in terms of anything specific.
So I'm not hearing, on the overall, I'm still not supportive, but I want to see us, you know, encourage and hear from staff, hear, have staff hear from us that we're supportive of at least going down the path for that special treatment area. For Mr. Cummings, who's been with us for multiple, multiple years, and been in good standing with the county in all of his endeavors.
I'd be good with that as well, Madam Chair.
Yep, okay, very good. Is there any, Kelly, what was a specific direction that you would need in order to, or Eric, to be able to move forward with that from us today?
I think with regard to that specific project, we hear the Board, we will work with the property owner to bring back, and eventually a request for an amendment to the general plan rezoned to include that property within that specific special treatment zone.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
May I also ask that we include the one legacy grower whose operation is just outside it, on the, who is still south of the Carmel River in the Carmel Valley area?
And would that be handled in the same way as a special treatment area? Okay, so there's two properties that were, we would be asking to have looked at for special treatment area consideration? Craig Spencer?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. There's two ways that the Board could consider special treatment areas. One is they could direct, you know, as a Board, direct amendments to the general plan. That would take the burden off of the applicant to apply for and have considered the general plan amendment for their property. So it's either, it could either be initiated by the Board as a matter of policy, or initiated as an application by the owner of the property.
Okay, and you would need that direction, to be clear from us today? Oh, you're muted. Craig Spencer, you're muted. We lost you.
Thank you. If the Board today wants to direct staff to amend the general plan, absent any request from any specific property owners, then, then yes, we would need that direction today or at some point when, when the Board is prepared to forward that recommendation as a, as a, a policy decision.
Would this be something that would go to the Planning Commission before coming back to us? Would that be a more appropriate path?
It would, it would go, it would go to the Planning Commission, yeah.
We don't need to- Go ahead.
Well, this isn't part of the motion.
Correct, it's not.
Because this is spot zoning, and we're picking this person, and now she's picking another person out, and I, I'll tell you, as soon as that happens, they're going to start coming out of the woodwork. I need mine now, because I'm real close to him, and he got this, and we didn't. So I'm opposed to moving in this direction. I can see it for this one, but exactly what we said there, as soon as we do that, then one supervisor said, well, I got someone here that I want to move on, and then I got some people up in Paharo that may want to do that. So I, I'm opposed to the spot zoning.
Quite frankly, I have to agree with my colleague. I think it's too much for today.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have some additional, it sounds like additional conversation is needed around the issue of special treatment zones. Supervisor Lopez, did you have any, anything else to add in terms of the Salinas Valley discussion or special treatment zones? Otherwise, I think we'll, we'll take a vote on what we have here.
Well, again, I'm not, I'm not here in support. I would like that particular site to be included, but I do understand the concerns of the open up and roll. But again, I don't, I think all of your offices would concur that nobody's been as involved as Mr. Cummings in terms of showing up to every hearing, every Board meeting, or cannabis, and particularly the outdoor pilot program is involved. You know, it is unique in that sense, and so I wish we could find support there, and I would ask for that, but if not, I mean, I am supportive of staff recommendation.
Oops, sorry, Supervisor Alejo?
No, I want to agree with Supervisor Lopez, this particular applicant is unique from all others, you know, the amount of time in years that he's been, you know, submitting his paperwork and waiting for this process to get to where we're at today. And so I think it merits a different consideration in his particular case.
Okay, I'm inclined to support the particular, the one location that's been identified here, but let's go ahead and vote on the motion that's on the ground, since it's on the floor currently. And then maybe what we could do is, I'd ask, I would want more information, I think, about how the special treatment designation works, but we could potentially, I think, find support to move something, make something happen there as well. But let's move forward with the call for the vote on what we have in front of us. And this, again, just to be clear, is the staff recommendation as drafted in our Item Number 13, adding to that direction to staff to amend the good standing pathway to compliance to include outdoor growers. We'll take our roll call now.
Supervisor Alejo?
Aye.
Supervisor Phillips?
Aye.
Supervisor Lopez?
Aye.
Supervisor Adams?
Aye.
And Chair Supervisor Root Askew?
Aye. So with that, our motion carries, and I think I would, given the second conversation, I would love the opportunity to have a conversation with some of our staff about the special treatment designation process and how that works. And possibly, we can figure out a way to bring that back through an appropriate process. All right, thank you.
So Madam Chair, no direction to staff on this particular applicant?
No direction at this time.
Could, I mean, just, I'd like to make a motion that we do offer that special treatment to this particular parcel, the one for, the one that we've been referring to in the South County Planning Area.
I would second that.
And to clarify, Supervisor Lopez, are you suggesting that the county put forward that special treatment area as-
Right, we, the Board, would be making that direction today.
Okay, any discussion on this? All right, and I just state again, I would like the opportunity to have a little bit more information about how that process works and what that means before I vote to support it, but it is something that I'm open to. Once I am able to get more information, it wasn't something that I expected to be voted on in this meeting today. So I can't support it today, but it is definitely something that I would like to be able to have a conversation about in the future. So we'll take a roll call vote. Supervisor- We need to do a second public comment before we, because this is, okay, perfect. We'll take a roll call vote, thank you.
Supervisor Alejo?
Aye.
Supervisor Phillips?
No.
Supervisor Lopez?
Aye.
Supervisor Adams?
No.
And Chair Supervisor Root Askew?
I, I don't think I can support this today, but it is something that I would like to discuss in the future. Thank you.
I concur.
All right, with that, the second motion does not pass. So we will move on to our next item on today's agenda, which is Item Number 14, Consider Receiving an Update on the Salinas Valley Groundwater Basin. This item is scheduled for an hour. We do need to take a five-minute IT break so that our IT team can switch out the technology cartridge, so we will reconvene at 4:05. Thank you.
(laughing) Just kidding. Now, you're gonna have to wait till you go to the bathroom until the end of the day. (laughing) I'm just kidding. Yeah, that's good, you're learning, I like that.
All right, we are back. But that was more than five minutes, so we're not having any more recess breaks. No, we're gonna keep us on duty here, move it along. Okay, uh, next up, we have, um, item number fourteen. We still have two items left today, plus some closed session, uh, that the board needs to deal with. So item number fourteen is a thirty-minute item, which is Consider Receiving an Update on the Salinas Valley Groundwater Basin Investigation. So I'd like to welcome Howard Franklin, our Senior Water Resource Hydrologist, for this presentation. And again, I'll just say, we've got thirty minutes scheduled for this item to include all of our public comments and, uh, board conversation. So, anything you can do to help us stay on track, we would appreciate. Thank you, and welcome.
I'll certainly try. Uh, good afternoon, Chair Askew and members of the board. Uh, I'm here with the project team for the basin investigation to ask that you consider receiving an update on the Salinas Valley Groundwater Basin Investigation. Defined within the twenty-ten General Plan Policy PS three point one and as part of litigation settlement, the county's been conducting a zone two C study of the Salinas Groundwater Basin to evaluate existing and future seawater intrusion, groundwater levels, and total water demands for the basin. The Water Resource Agency has been managing that investigation for the county. This presentation is to provide an update on the status of that investigation and we'll be doing that for you in two parts, approximately fifteen minutes each. In the interest of time, I'd recommend that we take questions at the end of both presentations, but at your discretion, we can take questions at any time or after the first half. And first up will be an update on the modeling tools that are being developed for this project by Dr. Wesley Hinson of the U.S. Geological Survey. And in way of a brief introduction, Dr. Hinson has a Master of Science degree in hydrogeology from the University of Nevada Reno and he's earned his PhD in agricultural and biological engineering from the University of Florida. His research over the past decade is focused on method and tool development for climate, agricultural, and integrated hydrologic tools. Dr. Hinson, you're up.
Thank you so much for that great introduction, Howard, and thank you, the board, for giving me an opportunity to present the work that we've been collaborating on for these past few years. Really exciting work here. So first of all, I just want to go ahead and show, um, that this is not just a, a effort on, on one part. There's definitely been a wide variety of people who've contributed to this effort and continues to be a collaborative effort, public, private, as well as, uh, some educational mentorship from students, um, you know, throughout the California area and internationally. So definitely a large, uh, both federal and private partnership that a lot of great partners here, you'll be hearing from Derek Williams at Montgomery and his team, collaborating with them, uh, as well as Matt Bailey and Les Chow from the Wood, um, the Wood Consulting Firm as well. Those are other partners in the private realm that have been helping move some of these tools forward. Uh, I think it's important first, we're gonna go over a lot of terms. You might hear things and I want to make sure that there's a common thread of understanding of what some of these are and also to serve as a reference for later if, uh, you want to rewind the video on YouTube or something and know what these terms actually mean. Um, there's, there's a few highlights that'll really come up and the first is, uh, the California pesticide use and reporting database, otherwise known as CAL PURE. And that's an important part of the land use, uh, component of the study, which I'll explain about in a little bit later. Um, and the MOFLO One Water Hydrologic Model. Uh, that model is, is Buffalo OM, you may hear that, and, uh, you know what that acronym means. A water-balanced subregion is an area by, over which we perform a accounting of water demands and supplies. And so we aggregate a lot of, uh, community behaviors up. So we're not looking at necessarily an individual well's owner's behavior. We're looking at what is the community doing and how are they responding to changes in climate and water availability? Um, and then you may hear the Surface, uh, Water Operations Module in future, uh, future presentations. And a mechanism that we use to describe, um, model performance is called the Natch Sutcliffe Coefficient, or NS. So you may see these things abbreviated throughout the presentation and I wanted to provide a, a, upfront, a terminology for that. Um, again, there's a wide variety of tools that are in this Salinas Valley Model Suite that we've been building together for the past, uh, three years. Now, the, the BCM model is a, is a, a climate model. Um, there's a geologic model, the Salinas Valley geologic model. Um, the Salinas Valley watershed model, which feeds into the Salinas Valley Integrated Hydrologic Model and then is also being used later on as a derivative to understand reservoir operations and other, uh, to test other future, uh, components of water supply and demand. Uh, we have the operational version of the model as well. So, uh, we have the historical model, SVIHM, which is what we'll focus on today. And we have an operational version of the model, which is configured slightly differently and a lot of nuance there, um, for looking at operational context. And you may see that in, in upcoming presentations as we continue presenting, uh, this information. So the Salinas Valley is integrated model, or the historical model, is really a folk, a function of all these other tools that have been built throughout the years. Again, many of those acronyms I just described are described here, but the geology feeds into the climate, which feeds into the watershed model. Uh, the watershed model and the land use model together, work together, uh, with the integrated model to look at, um, how we, uh, translate, uh, estimates of area, uh, into estimates of, of water demand and then looking at supply from climates as well as from other produced water sources. So reservoir outflow, or river flow, or the, uh, well network. But each of these models is actually a function of many other sub-modes. And I'm not gonna read each one of these plots, but basically, I wanted to indicate that, you know, while it has a title of one specific aim, one model, it is actually a component of, many, many subcomponents are involved in each of these models. And that's, that's why this collaborative effort is so fruitful, but has definitely some challenges in trying to make sure that we get the data that's the best data we can. And that's why we've been really working with stakeholders over the past few years to provide this information. So again, we have a suite of extensive tools for decision-making. Uh, you'll hear more about this as all these tools come out and are publicly released. But here, I want to provide a, a brief enumeration of the, uh, historical model because that's the one that's probably mostly on people's minds. So there's a, the geologic model is very rigorous. It's based on, uh, the mythology database from Monterey County, um, as well as a regional scale model that was developed by the USGS, um, over the past twenty years. Um, and we use that information, uh, to develop aquifer properties for the model. Um, and shown on the left is just a picture of, of what those aquifer properties are representing in terms of the coarseness of material. Um, and then you can see that the extent and depth and kind of storage availability in each of the aquifers is represented in the model in a series of model layers. And each one of those layers can, basically simulates that specific aquifer so we can look at exchanges between one hundred eighty foot and four hundred foot aquifer for, for important places, like in the coastal region or in the east side or pressure regions. We also have the basin characteristics model, which is a, a climate model we use to downscale very coarse resolution climate data and use locally informed information to, to get better information about how climate is distributed through the basin. Then we have the watershed model and what you're seeing here is the entire, uh, picture of the watershed contributing area for the Salinas River. It includes both the, the upper basin of, uh, in the Paso Robles region, um, as well as both, uh, the reservoirs. Um, the red dots there are all the calibrated stream gauges that were used to enumerate this. And there's an entire separate report that'll explain the, uh, exact, uh, how these pieces fit together. But these, this watershed model is an independent standalone project that can also be used in the future to understand, uh, sediment and contaminant transport as well as climate and recharge, uh, that runs in a different kind of time scale than, uh, the historical model. So that's a future availability of a tool that we want to make sure you're highlighting so you can leverage that for future studies. Uh, one other important piece of this is we have land use. Obviously, we have a very, very well-established agricultural industry here and it's important to kind of represent what's going on there in an aggregated way so that we can best plan and, and keep, uh, water resources for everyone to use. So, we have these, uh, multi-year snapshots of land use. They're often aggregated to very coarse scales of, you know, very few crop types or, uh, groups of crops that, um, it's hard to find literature values for or information about specific demands for. Um, in addition, these are usually collected as part of multi-year efforts. So the very intense and, and varying nature of the production that we know is happening in, in the Salinas Valley with how productive it is, uh, is not really well captured by these multi-year snapshots. So you can see here, kind of even throughout the years, there's a variation in the amount of, uh, of detail that we can get from the model. And we try to develop a method that leverages these amazing data sets that the stakeholders have built over the years and, uh, also create a consistent workflow that we can use and keep updating to keep the model relevant to make current decisions. So we really made a, a, a land use model that we've now coupled to the Salinas model that generates the input data for the, the demand calculations that we can continue to improve and refine as we get better data from the stakeholders. Uh, we use a tiled approach, so we're using all the available data we can. And we collapse all of those different data sets into one data set that we say this is represents, in this particular year, this represents the, the best snapshot. So they, we aren't applying nineteen ninety-seven data to date that's happening in twenty twelve, but there are areas that are overlapping that don't always have a continuous set of land use tiles that assign them. So we wanted to make sure that we're capturing those behaviors on the fringes. And this is a stakeholder-driven process, again, that we're relying snapshots and aerial photography. We're incorporating the annual, uh, agricultural commission data and stakeholder outreach activities. So this is done, it isn't done in a vacuum, it's not a black box. We're gonna be publishing the method as well. Um, and we're also working with the Department of Water Resources to treat, bring this out, uh, and, and maybe bring it more forward for other communities throughout the state. How it works is we use the Califi, California Pesticide Use Reporting Database. Uh, and this is a, a database that has continuous records back to nineteen seventy-four. And it's a wealth of information about pesticide application. And it has some, uh, inconsistencies here and there and some things to work out as any database that's evolved over the evolution of computers. But we have an amazing source of data here that we can leverage to understand and get at maybe the more temporally variable pieces of what we're doing. So how much things are varying in space and time. So here, we actually take two land use tiles per year. So we're capturing kind of an early season and a late season behavior. So we're capturing kind of an early season and a late season behavior. And this was selected as a way of gathering information about land use at a scale that's relevant, but not too obtrusive. Because we don't really have, we need more refined land use data to really go to a finer resolution than maybe a couple of land used tiles a year. But comparing that to the previous efforts where there were multi-year snapshots, this is a significant improvement in resolution. Now, what I have highlighted in cyan on the screen, which is where the red arrow is pointing, is a specific township range section. In that we take and we mask out areas that we know to be stable kinds of land uses. So things that are hardened crops, like vineyards, or things that we know are natural lands or urban lands, or specifically a specific type of land use. We don't include that area in any of the area weighting, just so we make sure that we're not applying a cropped land use to an area that has no crop in it. However, we had to the rest of the area that has a vague attribution of what the land use could be, such as irrigated row crop or vegetable crop or truck and vegetable crop. Those are very, very vague categories to really describe the wealth of, of variety that's going on throughout the basin. So we wanted to improve that. And what we do is we take that over that area weighted component. We take the CALPURE information and then we map it onto the model grid and assign it. As an example here, we'll show here the March distribution of crops is, you know, 27% of crucifers, which that's the broccoli family, broccoli and cauliflower. And then it's 72% lettuce in the month of March. And then we take, basically apply that area weighting to blue shaded region of that graphic. So the gray area is some other kind of land use that we're not going to try and update. Now we have that same processes applied in August. So we see here that the rotational crops are kind of filling in that last little bit of productivity ability for the year. We have the, the broccoli family is kind of reduced in production and that we're really trying to get the last bit of that lettuce crop out. So you're seeing that August distribution changing as well. Now, this is just an explanatory graphic. If you happen to be in that township rate section, I'm not trying to indicate specifically what you're growing there. But this is just to illustrate the method and how we're applying this more rigorous land use information to get better aggregated behaviors in our communities. So you can see here is, on the left is the 2011 land use with all the different categories that we've defined within the model. We actually have 52 different land use types. And that includes native vegetation as well as urban land types and semi agricultural, other kinds of land use other than cultivated lands. And there are over 23 actual crop categories for representing families of crops more, more discreetly. And so here on the right is the, is where, what we would have assigned, the red area is what we would have assigned to just irrigated crop of some site and tried to estimate its water demands. And on the left is where we actually have broken out the 23 groups of different crops and tried to assign some water needs to each one of those types of crops. And this allows us to get for each one of the model cells, a much better resolution on the six acres that we have of the model cell for crop type, multi cropping and crop variation. What was important here to notice is that, you know, the green line in these graphics is indicating the, what we would have had as acreages for all these lands if we had just gone with what land use data we have. The red line is what we've been able to reproduce through time using the method that I've just described. And blue line is the agricultural commission reported data. What's important to note here is that we actually are getting the temporal variability and the general trends quite well for an independently estimated method for land use. And that the existing land use methods aren't really as rigorous as needed to really capture the, the variety of different crop behaviors. And, and finally, that tomatoes and peppers, which aren't actually even called out as a specific land use, have, we have a signal and understanding of their variation in time as well in the model without having to, to actually have a land use component that's been recognized as that. We have received substantial input. This, again, like I said earlier, this is been a really big group effort. We had stakeholder surveys, 11 meetings, eight technical advisory committees with ex agricultural experts and local and national agricultural experts to boot. And then we've also been working with the groundwater sustainability agencies to either update them on the general persons or work directly with them when possible. The, the model itself is calibrated. That means that we adjust parameters within ranges that we understand them to vary. And we just do that until we get a better answer and we make sure that we're understanding and developing the model and kind of tuning it for the local environment. And we did 104,000 observations of, of reported data that we've received from both the agency, the county and stakeholders. And this includes stream flows, water levels and reported groundwater pumpage. We actually have these subareas that everyone's familiar with and uses colloquially to discuss, you know, ideas about water in the basin. And very widely used, they come from Baltimore 18. We use those as a basis for how we kind of divided up zones for analysis in the model. And one point I want to note here is that we, there's all this definition of these areas, but they can vary slightly between different agencies perception of what they mean. This study came about as a function of understanding the zone 2C benefit region. And that has a different maybe aim than the, the Salinas Valley Basin GSA that may have a different, slightly different definition for some of these subareas. So it's important to note that here and also with your stakeholders that there may be some small differences in areas or what wells are included in which area across some of these related publications that you're going to see. But we're going to really work hard to try and make sure that we minimize those when we can, or at least explain what those differences are where they're relevant. We broke those 10 regions into 30 water balance regions. And how that works is we just split the main regions across the river. We didn't want wells from one side of the river pumping to meet demands on the other side of the river. That didn't make conceptual sense to us. So we just split those major components up into the kind of east side and west side. And then we also have an area defining the zone 2C region and areas defining the outside zone 2C region. So just want to show preliminary data here for the groundwater levels and calibration. We're getting good resolution for the CSIP area, for the east side, Red Parian, Upper Valley, Forbay and the pressure area. These are just some simulated results to show that we're taking the data that we received from the county and we're, we're using that data to make a decision tool for further use. And then we're really simulating these reported agricultural pumping quite well. We, we have a NASH Sutcliffe, as I said before, is a way we say a model is a good fit or a good representation of the system. A perfect model is a value of one and any reasonable model is any value of a point six. So we have a metric of point eight seven. And that's the annual estimation area is quite low, about nine, three, nine point three percent. But this pie chart on the bottom is really illustrating that, that amount of error. Much of that error is actually coming in the early and late growing season. So at the fringes of production where we need maybe some more stakeholder information to guide how we handle the model during that period. And then the winter information where there's a lot of interaction between climate and demands. And there's also sanitation, field preparation, livestock or other field management activities that may not be well captured that we may need some more information to really capture. But barring that, we're still getting a good fit overall. And only a nine percent error and only four percent of that error can be attributed to the area, the time when people are really growing crops. Now, we've been thinking a lot about how can we improve this tool moving forward, right? We want to keep this model a living thing that is suitable for answering the questions that need to come up in the future. And this error prediction could really be improved by understanding the agricultural storage operations that are going in the model. Right now, we aren't simulating the hundreds of agricultural ponds that are filled and drained specifically along with their canal networks. There's a, there's many, many agricultural storage, temporary storage operations that, that may be influencing the timing and valuation of how we're, we're really getting data in the model. Also validation of the land use. We have great, these multi-year snapshots, but if we had some invested resource and, and efforts and collaborative efforts to really get at regular validation, maybe a sub-annual or annual land use validation by parcel that we can use to test the model and evaluate, evaluate how well it's performing. And then again, the last part, which is getting that, what our largest source of error is. And that's better understanding the ancillary water uses that aren't well represented by a crop model, which is what we currently have in the simulation. So the timeline, everyone always wants to know this and it's a definitely USGS has a very rigorous peer review. And that's honestly why we're brought in to manage these kinds of situations where there may be litigation or there was prior litigation. And that's because our review process really makes the, the process a lot more smooth and a lot more defensible. So here in the summer and fall, we've already begun our review with, internally with the agency and with our partners. And we have, we're going to fully submit this to the USGS peer review. Currently it's in the first chain of management review before it goes off to peer review. And then get the, the, good repart, writing on the operational model report. The next thing after that is it goes to USGS specialist review. That should be this winter and that's when we actually have a, a, a national specialist take a look at the model and make sure that it's set up properly and has rigorous methods and that's clearly documented. Then we have an editorial review that should happen in the spring. And then final approval by the Secretary of Interior. Again, that's another reason why we have such an extensive review process, but also why our results carry such weight. Because we, the Secretary of the Interior is going to be signing off on this report before it's published and released to the public. And then we're looking at publication and release of the archive sometime next summer in 2022. Just for illustration, the bottom graphic is just showing the number of steps that, that main author of this report, me, must go through to get, get through the finish line of the USGS review. Just to illustrate, there's a lot of different components here that we're, we're all working through. And I want to also acknowledge one last thing and that's these, there's been substantial contributions to the development testing of the One Water Hydrologic Model. And there actually, some of these features are being used in a case before the Supreme Court. So I want to thank the county for their support of this effort. It's helping both the local area, you know, find better ways of managing your water, understanding what's going on, but also helping the rest of the country with, we have the tools that are being developed as a part of understanding and model post-processing and pre-processing to make the model more accessible to people that maybe aren't specialists like me. We had the, the CALPURE method is being picked up by the Department of Water Resources. And we're doing a pilot study right now to look at mapping of irrigated lands for the states. So your contributions have made that possible. And then we also, the aggregated data is really helping for validating and testing of new remotely sensed methods that are being used at a national scale as well as, as local, as, you know, coordination efforts with the GSAs. So really a lot of far reaching impact in all these tools. And I really am glad I had a moment today to talk to you about all of this work that we've been doing.
Great, thank you. So this was, should we go to questions now or was there more information to present?
We, we had another short presentation by Mr. Derek Williams. We could pause here for questions specifically on the model or get through the entire project update and, and had questions then.
Great. Let's, let's finish up with the second presentation and then we'll come back to, to questions and public comment. Okay, thank you.
Okay, great. Wes, Wes, if you'd let go of your screen share. And while we're switching screens, I'll go ahead and introduce Mr. Derek Williams will provide an update on the status of the investigation as well as a timeline for project completion. Mr. Williams has earned his master's degree in hydrology from the University of Arizona. He's practiced hydrogeology in California for over 30 years. He started and was president of Hydrometrics WRI and is currently a principal hydrogeologist with Montgomery and Associates, working out of their San Luis Obispo office. Mr. Williams is licensed by the state of California as a geologist and a certified hydrogeologist. Derek?
Thank you very much, Mr. Franklin. Members of the board, I will do this quickly, hope to get you to your next item rapidly here. This is going to be a brief update on the basin investigation that is going on. It is being developed by Montgomery and Associates by Pete Dennehy and Abby Ostovar, along with myself from Montgomery Associates in coordination with Monterey County staff, particularly Mr. Franklin and Amy Woodrow, working closely with them. And of course, with Dr. Henson, who just gave you the talk on the model because that model is important in this present, in this study. So I'm just going to give a quick update of where we are and what you should be expecting to see in the final basin investigation. Talk about the timeline, the purpose, the objectives. I'll give you a little background, but really to start talking about the study methods and what you expect to see. That's where I'm going to concentrate and then talk about our timeline also and the next steps. Where this comes from, of course, in 2008, there was an EIR underpinning the general plan. And it estimated some of the groundwater conditions in that EIR. It's, as I say, it supported the general plan, which was published in 2010. In 2012, there was a settlement agreement on the general plan and the EIR where the county agreed to certain aspects to, to take some certain studies there. Out of that settlement agreement, there was a 2015 State of the Basin Report that was developed by Brown and Caldwell. It is a fairly thick and hefty report that, that has quite a bit of good basic information about the entire valley in it. These, these last three bars are all items that came out of the settlement agreement. So the State of the Basin Report was one. The models that are being dealt, developed by Dr. Henson that he just discussed, that's an ongoing process. We have that listed as 2016 to 2021. That's the ongoing process that Dr. Henson just talked about. That came out of the settlement agreement. And finally, a few studies that also come out of that, the, what's called the SCRBS, which stands for the Salinas Carmel River Basins Study. It doesn't have an acronym that rolls off the tongue equally easily, but I'll call it the Scribs or something like that. There's also some GSPs that are going on. The GSPs, of course, are the groundwater sustainability plans that are being put together by the Salinas Valley Basin GSA and other GSAs also. And this study, those are all going on now. This study that we're going to talk about today is the one that came directly out of the settlement agreement. So that's the timeline and how we got here. The study that we're talking about is one that addresses that settlement agreement. And specifically the purpose of this study is to reassess the assumptions in the EIR related to land use, population and the water demands. One thing we want to do with this study is to align it with the groundwater sustainability plans that are being developed. And actually Montgomery and Associates is the contractors to the GSA to develop those. So we want to align what we do in this study with the GSPs. It's not so much that we are going to align every detail in this study with the details of the GSPs, but the ideas of how water is managed and what the options for water management in the future are should be aligned. Also, we're aligning this with the SCRBS studies, the Scrib studies. So we're trying to make sure that all the water management studies in the valley are coming into alignment and going the same direction. That's our idea here. Specific things that we are looking at, looking at the groundwater conditions and the projected 2030 groundwater conditions. 2030 was of course the projection date in the general plan. It was a 2010 general plan. So it looked out to 2030 as, as one of the timelines it was looking at. So then, and we want to compare what we find in the current and projected groundwater conditions to the EIR, to the general plan. And then based on that comparison, are our projections slightly different than the EIR and the general plan? Make some recommendations on where the county might go should groundwater conditions exceed the 2030 projections or should there need to be any management actions come 2030? So that's generally it. We want to do our own analysis of water use compared to the EIR and the general plan and then make recommendations based on that. We will be using the groundwater model that Dr. Henson just talked about to be doing this analysis. And so as I said, his, his work is pivotal in completing this project. Some specifics about this. As far as how we're going about this, as we're looking at two different types of water use that we're reassessing, both agricultural and urban water use. The agricultural water use is estimated using the groundwater model as Dr. Henson talked about there. And we're going to be incorporating into it some land use changes, crop water use coefficients and some climate change assumptions. The urban water use is going to be developed from multiple sources. I'll talk about it in a minute. So we'll have some multiple sources sort of on urban growth. And then we'll use water use coefficients, estimates of gallons per capita per day to estimate from those growth estimates, how much water might be used. So the two parts that we talked about, the agricultural water use has a number of items that impact it. One of them is the question, are there going to be agricultural land use changes? And we're estimating that using a model called the Lucas Model. It's a land use and land cover projection model. I'm sorry, I, I lost the acronym Lucas there. It's a land use model that is developed by the USGS and it estimates how land use might change based on previous, previous land use changes and trends in land use changes. We're checking the estimates of the Lucas Model because the Lucas Model starts in the past and estimates land use changes through today. We're checking it against other data. And this is a key point. We're not just using one source of data anywhere in this project. We're checking the land use data against Department of Conservation Farmland Monitoring Mapping Program. Make sure that our land use data is reasonable. We're also going to use the crop coefficients, the same ones we have today. The crop coefficients are just a number of how much water do we think a crop uses? We'll use the same coefficients we have today. And then we have some climate change estimates in there, and these are climate change estimates from the Department of Water Resources. They have an estimate for what 2030 climate change should look like, including sea level rise. So all that will be integrated into our agricultural water use estimates. In our urban water use estimates, we are starting with a population based on the AMBAG 2018 report. And taking that forward, looking at those projections and verifying those projections, again, with additional sources of data. The California Department of Finance data for population and the U.S. Census Bureau data for population. Combining all those to try and get the best estimates of what population growth has looked like and what it might look like in the future. Again, we'll be looking at what it has looked like since 2010, when the general plan came out, and then say, does it look different than the general plan? And if so, should we have a different projection going forward? As far as water efficiency, we have looked at three options that you might have for your water efficiency. We're looking at water management plans, guidance from draft efficiency legislation at the state level, what efficiency is going to be required. We're ending up saying, we're going to look at three options in this study for what your water efficiency should be. The low would be you're using the same amount of water per capita as you're using today. Medium would be a 10% reduction in water use per capita, and high would be a 20%, which is the number that you've been using the Scrib study right now. So we have three options. And that brings up the point. Because the future water use is going to be uncertain, we are actually going to be simulating three different options for what your water use might be. We'll have a low, an average, and a high water use. And they're based on these data. The low water use will assume low population and low agricultural growth, both of those coming out of the Lucas Model that I mentioned. The Lucas Model is that land use change model. And so we have one Lucas Model that estimates low population and ag growth and has high water use efficiency. So there's not much more water being used, and we're using all the water we pump very efficiently at one end. At the other end, the Lucas Model that we're running has a high population and high agricultural growth option, and we have less water use efficiency. So we're pumping more and using it less efficient. And then there's a medium simulation we'll be running also. So this will give us a realistic range of what the water uses might be in 2030 from low to high. And that's what you should expect to see, sort of a range with some options in it. And based on that range of options, we'll be comparing that range of options, as I said, to the EIR and to the general plan, and then coming up with suggestions on how, what water management activities might need to be implemented should one of, should, depending on where we land on that range of options. Based on that, the next steps we're going to be doing, we need to compile the projections for the future and then start running those models, then get down to this last one. Here's really where we want to get to, reassess the findings of the EIR based on these models, the models based on the code that Dr. Hinson's doing. And once we run those, we'll be able to reassess how that looks compared to the EIR and compare, and then complete the report. The timeline for doing that, probably about five months to complete after the USGS, after the Water Resource Agency and the USGS and ourselves and any other consultants agree that the models are suitable for doing that work. That's really what we want to get to. In that five months, we'll be running the models, scenarios and processing them, analyzing the data, drafting the report, getting review comments, and then finalizing the report. Quite a bit to actually do in that five months there. So that's a very quick update, kind of erased through everything. But with that, I think this is the appropriate time for questions, either for myself or for Dr. Hinson or for Mr. Franklin, I believe. Yeah.
Great, thank you so much. You had, this was fabulous. Howard, I'll let you, anything else to add before we go to the board?
Just that I know it's a lot of information at you. We try to be brief. It is a very complicated project, but what you can see all through it is we've tried to integrate it into everything else going on within and around the basins, integrating, coordinating these with other studies, with the GSAs. So hopefully, we'll have one story when it's all over.
All right. I will bring this back to the Board of Supervisors. Thank you for the, the, the work that you're, you're doing and, and the detailed presentation. Colleagues, questions before we go to the public? Supervisor Adams?
Thank you very much for your presentation. I've read about and heard about all of you, and I appreciate so much what the, the work that you're doing. I just wanted to know, so I, I understood that, how you do all of this. What would be the application that we as a board would use this to determine?
So the investigation is, is a result of litigation. It's going to be answering specific questions around the settlement of litigation. But basically, the, the report is going to show us how we're using our water today, how we've used it historically, and how water might be used under different types of development moving forward.
Thank you. Just what I wanted to hear. I don't see any other hands raised from my colleagues, so we'll go out to public comment, I think. Members of the public who have, I would like to weigh in on this presentation are invited to raise their hand so that I can call on you. We will stick with our minute 30 for public comment today, and I'd like to welcome Nancy Isaacson. We've given you permission to, to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy Isaacson for the Salinas Valley Water Coalition. I'd like to thank staff and consultants for their presentation, and I just will, couple of comments. You know, one of the underlying elements, arguments of the litigation and ultimately settlement agreement was that the EIR in part relied on the Salinas Valley Water Project and its promise of providing an adequate water supply to 2030. So, you know, looking at that, the operational model, if defined it as having a baseline period of 1967 to 2014, it would, seems like it would be important, if it's possible, to extend that baseline period to, you know, even 2020, because the Salinas Valley Water Project had only been operating for five years at that point. Mr. Williams at a GSA meeting the other day raised concerns about the model underestimating the groundwater pumping. And Mr. Hinson has said that he thought maybe by 9%. Mr. Williams said at the GSA meeting by about 20%, which is a significant difference, and that could have a significant impact on the investigation's conclusions. Last thing I'd like to say is that while the, the model may not be a black box, but in effect, it is a black box until the model's fully released and the public has been able to review it and have it publicly vetted. So, thank you.
Thank you for joining us today, Nancy. Next up, we have Thomas Versick. Thomas, we'll give you permission to unmute and welcome your comments.
Thank you, Chair. Ruth Askew, Tom Versick speaking. I represent agricultural entities in the southern part of the Salinas Valley, and thank everyone for the presentation. One question, actually two questions, I suppose. One is, is there a, a place where one can go to download these very useful and detailed PowerPoint presentations? If not, who is the person to whom I should email a request for those PowerPoint presentations? And two, if Dr. Hinson or someone desires to respond, I have, I have a sort of a specific question. I had this impression from participation in the Salinas Valley Basin GSA meetings over the course of some time, that the, the models, not just one, would be, the SVIHM would be released first, and then there would be others. And it sounded, but I couldn't quite read the presentation on my screen, that all the models would be released altogether in that 2022 timeframe. So if you can, if someone can provide clarity, that would be lovely. If not, that is at least my impression of what at one time had been reported, that the models would be released one after the other, not necessarily all in one batch. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands raised, so we will go ahead and close public comment. Going to bring this back to the Board of Supervisors. The questions that I had were, I think, similar. So I, in terms of the timelines that, that were presented to, to finalize the reports, I appreciated earlier in the presentation where there was quite a bit of stakeholder involvement. Can you explain how the stakeholder involvement will continue and, and where in those timelines that were shown, the stake, additional stakeholder input, information would be shared and input would be solicited?
Yes, absolutely. So a significant amount of stakeholder input went into the initial model development and configuration. And that's the model that the USGS is going to be submitting for publication and will eventually be available. The Water Resources Agency, along with the Salinas Valley Groundwater Basin GSA, is currently working on a joint funding agreement with the USGS to continue the use and development of this model into the future, at least for another four to five years, where we'll complete the development of the operational model. And during that period, there'll be significant stakeholder outreach as we continue to refine and update the model.
I'm sorry, so looking at the slides, can you be more specific about when and where that happens?
So that's not seen on the slides in our presentation, but we'll be entering that agreement at the start of the 2021, or 2022, 23 fiscal year. No, I'm sorry, 2021, 22 fiscal year. We'll be entering that agreement in the next phase we'll start. You don't see that on the slides.
Okay. So by that, so between now and when the publication in the model archive in the summer of 2022, any public involvement or stakeholder feedback would have happened prior to where we're at today?
That's correct.
Okay. And then I guess I have a couple other questions about the assumptions that go into the model. And it sounds like USGS is really driving what those assumptions are. At what point do those assumptions become public? And would, would stakeholders be able to, to sort of dig into the different data points that are being used to develop sort of the outcome information?
So as we release the basin investigation report, the 2C investigation, we will be releasing output files from the model that that was based on, and that will be slightly ahead of, they'll be significantly ahead of actual public release of the model. In the meantime, the agency with the USGS cooperation has released most of the model operational files and a significant number of output files that have been requested by various members of the public. So it's ongoing. Actual release of the operate, of the executable model will need to wait for full USGS publication.
Okay. And I'm just thinking, when it comes to water, the more that we can get agreement on the, the inputs as we move, move forward, the more likely we are to have agreement on the, the final product at the end of the day. And so I, I'm always just kind of thinking about the process in some cases is as important as, as the outcome. And making sure that we're, we're bringing, bringing everyone along in ways that they feel like they can trust the final product is, is, is pretty important. So those are my questions, and I appreciate the, the detailed presentation and all of the work that's being done. I will take it back over to Supervisor Lopez for additional questions and comments.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to express my thanks for your comments. Those are questions that I, I ask often when these questions of models, and we need to kick the tires is often the phrase that I use, to fully understand what's going into the black box to spit out the answers that we're all kind of hinging our, our needs and expectations on. And so it, it's no different here than it is in any of those other conversations, and I know that we've had those around many projects that have come before us. And for that transparency sake and that confidence, I don't know that we'll ever get to a place where we agree on water. I'll be frank about that 100%. But, you know, to make sure that we're working off the same notes, it is critical that we understand what goes in and comes out. And in terms of timelines, I think that's just, you know, I, I want to be clear that my concern with saying, well, this piece is going to go first and we'll ask you to trust us, you know, that there's not a lot of trust around water. We need transparency. And so making sure that that happens as soon as possible is critical, and not just on this project, but every other, where we rely on models that might have proprietary nature to them, knowing that there's always competing models, but the more that we can kick the tires and say, okay, well, this kind of lands in the middle of all the others, perhaps we can move forward. So again, I appreciate the line of, of questioning, and it's a great kind of foundation for progress moving forward. But appreciate the presentations as well. They were thorough. I think a little more on some of that baseline data would be great to share. But again, I'm kind of a, a data wonk and love to hold on to that stuff and look at it time and time again. I know sleeping material for others, but it's just kind of how I live. But thank you, Madam Chair.
Great. Any other board comments? Oh, in this case, we really are just receiving an update, so unless there is direction to be given or additional questions. There was a question from the public about where these presentations will be posted. If we could maybe get clarity about, they can definitely be received if you email the Board of, click of the Board at COB@CO.Monterey.ca.us. If you email us and request the PowerPoints, we can be sure to have those forwarded back to you. But it would be great as well if this could be posted somewhere on our county website. Maybe Water Resources Agency has a page dedicated to this information? I'm assuming.
Chair, we will, we'll either work with county staff or we'll, one thing we can do right away is simply post it to the agency's website, so it's available there. But we'll also work with county staff to find other locations. Also, I, I am getting the message, transparency, show us what we can show you. We're going to regroup and talk about what parts of the model that we can show, what information we can provide in more detail, and make that available to the public also. I'll work with the team on that.
Wonderful. That would be fabulous. Supervisor Alejo?
Madam Chair, I just quickly wanted to recognize the work that has been done. In many ways, this is the first time this has ever been done in the Salinas Valley to this extent and with, with this type of science behind it. And I think there's been a lot of quite stakeholders, not only through the Water Resources Board and the Board of Supervisors, but also the, the Salinas Valley Basin Groundwater Sustainability Agency. So I think there's been enough advisory and committee set up and enough stakeholders that are watching everything. So I think rest assured that, that I think a lot of those who have been following the water are making sure that we're, we're keeping on top and, and, and providing, I guess, multiple levels of, of participation and input by the public. But this certainly is, is very important, and we got to get it right because if we can get it right from the beginning, we're going to be on good footing from here into the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Any final comments? All right, we will receive this report, and thank everyone for the work that went into getting it onto our agenda today and, and, and doing, and the work that was done and continues to be done. So I appreciate you sticking with us in a long afternoon. All right, our next item today is item number 15, receiving a report on the 2021 redistricting process and providing some direction to staff. I'd like to welcome Rosemary Soto, and I believe, Rosemary Soto. Thanks for joining us, Rosemary.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and dear members of the board. Thank you for this opportunity to share an update on the start of our progress with the 2021 redistricting effort. As you may remember, I did have the, the opportunity to lead our 2020 census count last year, and so this is- last year, and so this is the next section that follows that endeavor. And so the purpose of redistricting for the sake of the public is to ensure that our supervisory districts are, our boundaries are drawn that are reflective of the new population data and any shifting of populations. The redistricting locally will focus solely on the redrawing of the supervisory districts, district boundaries for the County of Monterey. We do have several different governing laws that guide this entire process, the Fourteenth Amendment, Equal Protection Clause, the, of the Constitution, the California Elections Code, and these are the sections, the Voting Rights Act of 1965, and then the Fair Maps Act as well. And so we know that the timeline has been shifting based on some delays, the pandemic being one, and several attempts of the former federal administration to, to, to request or memos that were issued to re, I'm drawing a blank to properly express the request to modify census data extrapolating those pertaining to the immigrant communities of our nation. And so what we know now is that the census operations, you know, concluded last October. The original deadline to present the data to the President of the United States was December 31, and obviously that was not met due to those delays. The data was then to be provided to the states in April, which would have been this year. What we did receive is the apportionment data that was released in April 28 of this year, and we anticipate that the data, census data will be provided to the states by September 30. Then the state has a 30-day period for an adjustment process to include the prison population, and that was expected to, to then release that data, the adjusted data, to the counties by October 29. That gives us just a few weeks to ensure that we go through our process of finalizing the drawing of the drafts of the maps and the boundaries to then be adopted by the Board of Supervisors by December 15, 2021. So that is the overall process timeline in terms of when data is available to us and how we would work with that, with that information. In regards to the process and what is required as part of the redistricting process, we look to this particular section code of the Elections Code, and it is required that, you know, our, the districts to, the district boundaries, to the extent practicable be geographically contiguous, the districts must remain, must maintain the geographic integrity of neighborhoods and communities of interest. So there is a process for identifying and confirming the communities of interest. The districts must minimize division of cities and/or census designated places. Boundaries must be easily identifiable and, if possible, bound by natural, artificial barriers. And then the districts must not favor or discriminate against any political party. And then finally, public input that is coming particularly from minority communities and minority language, minority communities, is required to have had that very intentional and recorded input process. There is also a community engagement process that is a lot more extensive than what has been required in the past. In the past, it may have been a recommended practice, and now it is actually a requirement, and that is that we hold a public hearing or workshop that would have to be held before any of the maps are drawn. There should be two public hearing or workshops that would be held after the maps are drawn. So this would be in that period of time between the state's release of data to the counties and the adoption, right? And then one of those public hearing workshops must be held on a weekend or after 6:00 PM on a weekday, if it is on a weekday. All public hearings and workshops must be noticed to the public, so they're subject to the Brown Act, of which is a practice that we're all accustomed to. And then we must provide live interpretation for language access if it's requested before 72 hours prior to the workshop. And then we also must publish, along with the notice of all of the hearings and workshops, at least five days prior. Along with that process, we also have the opportunity to establish a commission, and so there are three different types of commissions that are noted here in this Elections Code. And one is an advisory, or sometimes known as a citizens or community advisory redistricting commission. The function of this commission would recommend to the Board of Supervisors placement of those supervisory boundaries, and then the Board ultimately makes the final decision to adopt about the recommended boundaries. Then the hybrid redistricting commission recommends that the Board of Supervisors provides a recommendation of two or more maps for the placement of those district boundaries, and then the Board adopts one of the two. And the final, the last option or potential option would be to have an independent redistricting commission, and this is clearly an independent body that is empowered to adopt those supervisory district boundaries. So a recommendation would be to select or, depending on your Board's direction, an advisory redistricting commission might be the most ideal for our county. It is what has been done in the past in 2000 and 2010. A commissioner application period would, solicitation period would, would need to occur. We would, the selection process would be determined by your Board, and in the past, there has been a 15-member slate of commissioners that would, that was approved by the Board, and so we may follow that same practice. You know, then there would be, the Board may determine the composition of the commission and the criteria for the, for the potential commissioners, as well as, you know, the Elections Code does have a very clear distinction in terms of its requirement that prohibits members of the Board, family members of members of the Board, staff members, or paid campaign staff of the Board from serving on this commission. The Board has the discretion to adopt additional qualifications for commissioners, and there are some potential, you know, recommended additional criteria that your Board may choose to, to add to that, including, you know, the requirement of being a registered voter, having the availability and the, to commit to this process where we would begin to meet and including participating in the hearings and workshops, and then, and having the experience or knowledge about the redistricting process, certainly the ability to analyze and comprehend the information that is presented before them is important, and an understanding of the voting rights process as well. While serving, you know, commissioners, it would be ideal that they may not be a candidate for elective office of the county and also while serving may not endorse, work for, volunteer for, or make campaign contributions to a candidate for elected office. Those are some pretty common practice criteria that we have researched, and so these may be certainly up to your discretion to determine and direct us to establish as part, as part of the application process. Before you, what you see here on the screen now was also attached in your board packet, and it is a proposed timeline for our work here moving forward. You're receiving this update today. We would propose that we begin a recruitment period as early as next week. We have a website that is ready to go live, and we would include both the option to submit an application online as well as in paper form by mail, if that's, if that's best for, for a potential candidate. And then there, we would want to come back to the Board for an approval in either mid, late July, June or July, and then begin to have our public hearing process and community input process, especially for some of these very key areas that we need to start off with, such as identifying and determining the communities of interest. So in a nutshell, this is kind of what we would be going by, as well as, I would like to recommend that in the recruitment period that we also hold, this would be an extra workshop, or to kind of inform the public about what is redistricting, sort of like a redistricting 101 sort of workshop, so that if individuals who may have had an interest but may have not had the opportunity to dive into a conversation, dialogue, and learn more about it, we would be able to provide that opportunity as well. So ultimately, we want to, we're working back towards the deadline of, you know, to, to meet the deadline for completing the adoption of the final maps that are brought to the Board. We would want to be able to do that in early December to make sure that we've dealt with any potential issues that might be coming up prior to that deadline of December 15. So your county staff team that is currently working on it consists of our county administrative office, who is responsible for the leadership of this project, as well as county council or elections department. Our ITD is definitely a big, an integral part, not only with their web and tech, but support, but also with their GIS analysts and supporting us with, with the process of the boundary drawings as well. We do anticipate a need to, to bring on a consultant who is a demographer and who has the expertise, subject matter expert in redistricting, and so that's something that we would come back to the Board with a request for approval and agreement to enter into a service agreement with a potential demographer. And at this point, that concludes my update on the 2021 redistricting. I welcome questions, and we're seeking direction on moving forward with this effort. Thank you.
Thank you. And just before we go out to the Board, I believe, Rosemary, if you could just clarify, there is a contract in the works with the demographer that would be returning for the Board to approve soon?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. So today's our opportunity to sort of get an initial update, to give some, to give some direction in terms of the questions that you outlined in the staff report, and then the contract with the demographer will return for approval by the Board shortly. Okay, wonderful. Supervisor Alejo, we'll start with you.
Yeah, first of all, I wanted to thank Rosemary for the presentation. It was very concise. There's been a lot of changes from the requirements of 10 years ago till, till this year, and she just kind of blended them in there nicely, including, for example, just additional hearing of communities of interest before the census data comes out in her, in her outline. She had that properly listed in the timeline of things that we need to do. And so, thank you, Rosemary. And it does make sense, after doing the work on the census, which was key to the redistricting, and also all the outreach you did with community partners, I think that those relationships are going to be critical to get the most participation and input so that, in this process, so that our residents feel that it was done right, that it was unfair, and, and we know that it's going to be lasting for a decade after it's approved. So I take this with all due seriousness of it. And I like everything you listed that we need, need to do and need to get started, including the, the initial hearing in July with the, with the commissioners that are, that are chosen, because I think it is, it is a complicated area of law, but it's certainly an important issue of civil rights and making sure that we're providing equitable opportunities for drafting these, these county supervisor boundaries that, that determine, you know, who chooses each, each one of us as the five board members. But the only thing I didn't see was just, I know that I also attended, in trying to learn that all the new requirements that, it was in a workshop last month that CSAC put on, and they, they did mention, at least the person making the presentation mentioned that counties, as part of this process, needed to put some online tools on, on the website, including like mapping opportunities where citizens could click on a few buttons, and that way they could generate maps that they would propose. I know there was some talk about that, and I know you probably already been talking to our IT team about how we might be able to put some tools, or maybe with the consultants, some tools that, that we don't need to reinvent, but I know other counties and cities are all, and school districts, special districts are all going to have to do the, perhaps the same. So that's one question, just, just the mapping tools that we would make available for the public, because some of that needs to be done now. And then I know that one of the slides that, in that training that I went through, it also pointed out that unlike 10 years ago, there's these more requirements about public participation, specifically they listed media outreach, involvement from good government, civil rights, civic engagement, community groups. We need to do live translation if requested 72 hours in advance of a meeting. We have to publish all the notices on the internet, publish a notice of required meetings five days before the hearing, publication of draft maps at least seven days before the adoption, publications of relevant demographic data, and receipt of maps or testimony for the public in writing or electronically. If you could just speak how, I know you, we're going to do this because you're, you're leading the effort here, but if you could just speak to those points of, of how we address these, these new requirements that didn't exist 10 years ago?
Sure, absolutely Supervisor. And, and you're right about the, all of the points that, that you mentioned. I did not go over them in my presentation, but they are definitely on our list of how to do the community engagement process. And the interactive tools, the online web-based interactive tools is something that we are currently exploring about how to best do that. I know that there are some tools that are out there that are already developed for that, and so I am definitely working with IT to make that happen. We have a website that is currently in draft form but ready to launch, just, you know, fine tuning a few details, and that would, and it would be constantly updated, and we would definitely make the space for the interactive tools for public mapping, because there, there does, there is a requirement that we need to make that opportunity available for folks to, for the public to provide some recommendations. As well as the, the public engagement piece, you know, I think that what is a good fit in terms of lessons learned from the 2020 census process is that it included, a lot of our outreach strategies are very much aligned with what is required this time around for redistricting, including the, you know, engagement of the media and, as well as affinity groups and that represent communities of color in Monterey County. So that's definitely something that we will be looking at and being as inclusive as possible. And one of the details that I also have discussed with our team is the fact that there is that requirement to provide language access and live translation. I would make the recommendation that we, we have our threshold languages in Monterey County, and you know, what we know is Spanish is one of those threshold languages, is that we automatically offer that interpretation without having the request, just in case, just to, just to make sure that that language access is something that is at the forefront of, of what we're doing. And certainly, if there are other languages requested than, within the 72 hours or ASL, for example, then, then we would definitely also make that possible.
Yeah, and just to end, I know we have to archive all, all this information that we'll put on the websites and maps and drafts. We have to kind of archive it, I think, for another 10 years as part of our historical record. But just one other thing I would request, I know as we get closer to the, the final meetings or perhaps, you know, in the early fall, I think it'd be nice to have at least one meeting in each district so that it's particular to each district, so each supervisor with you and your team could have an in-live slash hybrid with Zoom option to just be able to have those conversations in each of our district, just fully focus on, on the input from our constituents, and I think that would be appreciated. And if we could fold that in, into the timeline, I think, I think every supervisor would love to have that opportunity to engage directly just about their district with constituents.
Absolutely, sir.
Thank you, Rosemary, for all your work.
Great. Thank you Supervisor Alejo, and I would, would agree. You took it off my, I don't know if you're reading my notes here, but one of my requests was going to be making sure that we have outreach, at least with one hearing in each district. So I can definitely get behind that. One of, two of the questions that I have, Rosemary, before we go out to public comment, is there are three different options for how we form the, the new district boundaries, and staff is recommending the advisory redistricting commission. And I'm, I guess I'm inclined, I think it's important that we, we give the public authority to, to, to guide this process, and I, you know, I'm aware that, you know, these are districts that ultimately result in the real And I, you know, I, I'm, I'm aware that, you know, these are districts that, that ultimately result in the reelection of those of us sitting at this table. And so I'm hesitant to leave the authority for making boundary line changes at this table. I'd feel much more comfortable personally if we were able to give that authority to members of the public. And it seemed to me that the hybrid redistricting commission would be better positioned to provide map options to this board, allowing the board still to take into consideration nuances that we're familiar with in the community, however, preventing the board, who, who benefits ultimately in the future of the election, from being able to draw lines on those maps. So I was just wondering if you could explain why the recommendation was for the advisory redistricting commission and maybe not the hybrid redistricting commission?
Well, the, the hybrid definitely seems like something that, that might be your best option as well. The recommendation was, was simply based on what has been done before and what might, what might work this time around as well. But definitely there's no major like reason for the recommendation. It was something that just in, in the research of how it had been done in the past and, and it might be some, it's up to, to the board to, to determine what would work best. But that was based on, you know, research on, on years past and how it had been done before.
I understand, thank you. So, so it's a soft recommendation, maybe would be a way to describe that. Okay, and I just, yeah, I would feel much more comfortable if our commission that we assign develops some maybe map options, but that we don't, and then the board, this board can, you know, take a look at what those options, those map options are and choose the best one of the recommended options. That would leave me feeling much more comfortable. I'll go to Supervisor Adams.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much for your presentation, Rosemary. It was really great and I'm glad. Thank you also for giving us the opportunity to have just a little one-on-one with you and our, with our staff. It was very helpful. And my hope is that when we do have the meetings within each of our districts, which I fully support, that that could be the, you know, redistricting 101, when we talk about the criteria. So people really get an idea of what it is that we're, that we're going to be asking. I'm supportive of the idea of the advisory redistricting because that does give the community input. I feel good about that. And my expectation is that we as a board have to make the determination. It's our responsibility at the end to, to approve. I'm, I'm also really appreciative of the intent to have a very clear line between anything political, anything elective, and what it is that we're going to be doing with the redistricting. I think that's really important to have that, that delineation for transparency. One question I had for the, with the recommendation for an advisory commission, it indicated, if I'm not mistaken, that the staff then would use, would be the ones that selected the commissioners. And what I wanted to know is what would the criteria be that the staff would use when looking at the pool of, of candidates, so to speak, to make the determination? That's one part of it. And then the second part is those candidates would be divided again by district, correct? So that we would have people from the fifth district making the determination for, for there? Or how, how would that work?
Yes Supervisor, the, the, the commissioners would be representatives of, of each of the districts. And that's, that's why it was recommended a 15 member that, that would have three representatives for each district. And the criteria based on your direction for what that criteria should be, as it is outlined in our, in our board report, it, it could, you know, you can modify that, you can add or you can remove from that. And we would definitely spell that.
The pool, I get that. That's how you get the pool of applicants. But say there are 100 people who apply and we're only going to have 45 people. How do we, how does the staff choose the 45 from among the, the 100?
There are a couple of ways in which we can do that. We would certainly take direction from you on, on what you would like that process to be like, that we could, in other counties, they have, they have been appointed, they've been selected by the, the supervisors. In others, there, there have been like a lottery or random selection.
Like they do with the jury?
Pretty much. And then there's also, there could be a three-step process where the first five is, is selected by staff or by the, by, by the board and then the next five could be selected by lottery or by, perhaps by the, the first five that were identified. That you'd, you'd want to be looking at a, the makeup of, of the composition of, of that, of that slate based on what you have available to you in the, in the pool of applicants. So that is something that your board can also determine what, what that diversity should look like, what that composition should, should look like as well. So there's, there's a couple of different ways in which we can go about it. It, it would, it would depend on what you would, your board would feel would be most appropriate.
Thank you. That's great.
So this, okay, this is a chance for us to weigh in on what we want, the advisory, whether we want option one, two, or three on the redistricting commission and what eligibility criteria we want to have included. This is our opportunity for that. I'll go to Phillips first. Did you, are you moving in?
I, I'll wait and hear what my colleagues have to say. It's an interesting process. So I had a college professor and that's what he did is redistricting. So we, we learned a little bit about it. But I see my district and how it meanders around and, and it's like we found out, I got a little strip of land and it comes down to the, the train stations in my district and none of us could figure that out. I'm sure Alejo would try to take that away from me with, with this, but no, I'll wait to hear what my colleagues have to say.
We belong to District 1.
I don't know, District 4 is right there too. Supervisor Lopez.
Stay out of District 3 guys, just kidding. I'm a fan of the advisory model and I like the idea of us appointing. I know that's how it was done in the past here in the county and it was successful and got us to the districts that we have today, which really, you know, look the way that they do now as they should, in my opinion. I remember back when South County was represented by the same individual who represented Moss Landing. You know, and a lot of those challenges that came out of somebody representing far north and far south corners of the county were real. And so, you know, just given, given the report, given history and the process from 10 years ago and my experience having been around at that time, that's sort of where I'm at. Thank you.
All right. And Supervisor Lopez, while you're there, did you have any feedback on the eligibility criteria?
No, I think, I don't have any strong feelings on that. I, I agree with all the legal boundaries around those. And I think in terms of expertise, making sure that it's a well-rounded group, it's obviously something we're each going to advocate for within our district. And so, you know, any additional legal ramifications or, or boundaries around those requirements or things that I'd be accepting of. But overall, I do think that making sure that we're each appointing people with the time and expertise is the most important thing because there's a lot of people who will spend the time to educate themselves on these critical questions.
Great. Supervisor Alejo.
Yeah, I just wanted to say I'm, I'm comfortable more with option one. With elected officials, we should choose who, who are our appointees to that commission. And ultimately, we make the decision as, as elected officials, just as we do for every other decision that comes before the board of supervisors. But there, there was some mention that, that perhaps staff would choose the commissioners. I want to get clarity on that. Isn't, that doesn't seem to, that's not where that decision should lie, but it was mentioned. So I want to get clarity on it from staff.
No Supervisor, that, that, that could be an option. It's not what, what we were recommending. But it, it, there's certainly, there has been that practice in, in other areas as well.
Okay, got it. Thank you very much for that.
And Supervisor Alejo, did you have any feedback about the, the criteria listed? The eligibility criteria for commission members?
Madam Chair, it was, it was hard because I, I looked at last night for the, the report. It wasn't posted. I requested an email, a copy of it, letting staff know last night it was, the wrong one was posted for the item. So I haven't had a chance to look at that. So if there's a way to put that on the screen, I, I'd appreciate it.
Could we get the staff report up on the screen with the board criteria? The one item on the board criteria, and I'll just read a few of them, the following eligibility criteria for commissioners would be recommended. The one that I'm, I'm concerned with is that we were requiring registered voter in Monterey County. I know that, you know, we were really clear and, and so many of our other outreach activities that, you know, we represent everyone who is in this community and the actions and decisions of this board have impact on the lives of everyone, regardless of whether, what their voter registration status is. So for me, I feel like that would be a criteria that I would ask to have taken off of the list unless for some reason it is required by law. No comments. Okay.
Well, I, I, I would probably have a problem with that. It, 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 I mean, we, we afford a lot of opportunities and benefits to people who are, are not registered voters, but I think registered voters in our county should, is a proper criteria.
Okay, so some strong opinions on both sides of that one. Why don't we take it out to public comment and give our community an opportunity to weigh on, on this, which is fundamentally a public process and, and, and does belong to them? Let's go to public comment. If you're with us on Zoom, please raise your hand so that I can call on you. And we're going to stick with our minute 30 for public comment today. We'll start with Tammy Oliver. And if we could give everyone who's planning to speak permission to unmute so we can roll through. Tammy, thank you for joining us. We've got a minute 30 on the clock and we really appreciate your feedback today.
Thank you. Tammy Oliver, resident of Pacific Grove. And I would like to support the hybrid model where there is more authority in the hands of the commissioners. Because I think history has shown, as we've seen election reform and citizens' redistricting committees, they do a pretty good job. And it does provide some independence from people who are elected by the process. So my vote is for the hybrid model.
Thank you for joining us and for, and sticking with us at this late hour. Shannon Miller, we've got you up next. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you for getting involved in something that is more complex than it's ever been before. Yeah, I, I would also like to support the, the hybrid and live Zoom meetings, you know, so that more people can be involved in the meetings. I'd also like to support the hybrid redistricting commission. I know you guys would do a good job if it was the advisory commission, but I think you might have more support of the community with, with the hybrid version. And I'm going to be following that, that process that comes up for selecting the commissioners. That's going to be very interesting. As far as whether someone should be a registered voter in Monterey County, just want to make sure that they are residents of the county because we don't want people from outside coming in and trying to have input on the maps. I've heard of that happening before. So thank you very much for your work and I am glad to be riding along and watching what's happening. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comment on redistricting process? I don't see any other hands raised. So we will close public comment, bring it back to the board. What I'm hearing is that I may be alone in my request for the hybrid model. I'm just going to make the case again that this is absolutely, like fundamentally the public's, the public's, we're here to represent the public and we, you know, that the boundaries that, that exist for, for districts really, really belong to the public. They don't belong to any one of us sitting here. So allowing the hybrid redistricting commission would give the opportunity for commission members to bring forward two or more maps that have supervisor district boundaries. And this board would still have authority to choose from those, those map options. So we would retain the opportunity to, to adopt one of those maps without modification. However, the, the advisory redistricting commission really, you know, asks the commission to go out and do all of the work, but ultimately this board can sit down and redraw those maps however we, we please, which, which like I said, it, it gives me, gives me pause and it's not something that I couldn't support today. So Supervisor Alejo.
Well, I, I would, I would differ in that opinion because what we're asking for in number one is the same thing that we do every single Tuesday. We have a board of supervisors meetings. We have planning commissions, we have, you know, the planning commission mostly that, that takes decision and sometimes we agree with them, sometimes we don't. And so it's, it's no, no different in this particular case. So the, we, we are the ones who get elected and the voters choose us to, to make a wide range of decisions. So ultimately, that authority should, should like with the board of supervisors.
Supervisor Adams.
You know, I, I don't think that we could write it down as criteria. But I think one of the things that would be a real important mark to the community is as we vote on this, that it comes up to be a 5-0 vote. I think that's really going to be important.
All right. Well, I'm going to throw out a motion that we adopt the item number two, hybrid redistricting commission. I can support also the, the current eligibility criteria, since it sounded like that was something that people also felt strongly about, the recommendations that staff made. And give that direction to our, to our staff as we move forward with the contract for our redistricting consultant. So I don't hear a second for that motion. Would someone else like to make a different motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve staff recommendation number one.
Second, this is Lopez.
Okay, I think we have a motion from Supervisor Alejo with a second from Adams to adopt the advisory redistricting commission, which allows the board to recommend placement, which would recommend to the board of supervisors placement of the supervisor boundaries with the board of supervisor making final decisions. We have a motion, a second. We'll do a, we'll call vote.
Supervisor Alejo?
Aye.
Supervisor Phillips?
Aye.
Supervisor Lopez?
Aye.
Supervisor Adams?
Aye.
And Chair Supervisor Root, ask you.
No. All right. So that is direction. I'm, I'm, I, I, without anyone making different changes to the staff recommendation for commission member eligibility or getting clarification, it sounds like everyone's comfortable with the board of supervisors making the appointments to the committees?
What I was anticipating is that we would be, that, that staff would handle the mass recruitment. So that we do have a broad group of the community who applies. And then we would look at, then we would choose from among those, the people that we, that we want. We're not going to just go out and pick five, you know, three people each. We're going to go to the full community to get the pool. And then we refine the pool down to the, to the ones that we believe are select, are the right selection. And maybe we should agree that as a, as a whole board, we would approve the whole panel, not just, I, these are the ones I want, therefore these are the ones I get. That maybe we should try to see if we can all agree on the composition.
So each supervisor would bring, so the staff goes out, does a full recruitment. Each supervisor ultimately makes a decision about the three are people that they recommend or would like to nominate to the commission. And then as a full board, we approve the 15-member commission? Is that what I'm hearing? Does that sound, does anyone have a problem with that? Okay, I'm getting nods up here at the dais. I can't see the faces of Alejo or Supervisor Lopez. Speak now or do we need a motion to? Okay, let's, so we'll, we'll move. Okay, we will move to have staff, give staff direction to do the full recruitment for commission membership, I'm sorry, to people who would like to serve on the advisory redistricting commission. With each supervisor ultimately nominating three individuals to serve on the commission and the full board will approve the, appoint the commission as a whole at a board meeting. So that's the motion. Okay. Do we have a second for that?
Second.
Right, we have a second. We'll take a roll call vote.
Supervisor Lea-
Aye.
Supervisor Phillips?
Aye.
Supervisor Lopez?
Aye.
Supervisor Adams?
Aye.
And Chair Supervisor Root, ask you.
Aye. All right. I think, is there any other direction that's? All right, I think, is there any other direction that's needed, Rosemary, on this item so that, that, that the work can begin?
No, Madam Chair, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. All right, it is, uh...
First, ma'am.
Yep, Supervisor Phillips?
I'm, I'm good.
You're good, okay. It is 5:45, we are completed with the afternoon scheduled agenda items. We do have some critical closed session discussions that the board needs to adjourn into closed session for, and I am going to ask for a readout from closed session by County Council for the Water Resources Agency, Board of Supervisors of the Monterey County Water Resources Agency.
Thank you Chair, there was no reportable action today.
Okay, then we will adjourn the Board of Supervisors of the Monterey County Water Resources Agency, and we will recess into closed session to adjourn from closed session for the Monterey County Board of Supervisors. And I would, it's not on the agenda, but if my colleagues would entertain me, I would like to adjourn today in honor of Valerie Ralph, who celebrated her birthday recently. So... Oh my God.
I didn't remember, adjourn in celebration.
In celebration, in honor of, in honor of, in celebration of. Great, thank you. We appreciate everything that the clerk of the board's office does to keep our meetings running smoothly and effectively, and especially this year with all of the IT stuff that you've jumped in to support us with. So thank you.
Chair, finally, there's no reportable action for the Monterey County Board of Supervisors out of closed session either, nor will there be any, so we'll be adjourning out of closed session.
Okay, we will be adjourning out of closed session, and we will see everyone back here to do this all again next week. Thank you.